Morning, afternoon, evening.
It doesn't matter.
I don't know what day it is.
Now you have to try to prioritize.
Rename.
Maintain this would be a lot more difficult if I didn't have two computers right here because I can see one of the board docs and then one of everybody.
I know. I just do a lot of very small windows.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah.
Hey Jeff.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you? Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Hello, David.
Hello. Good evening.
As people, everything shifts on my computer and then I have no idea who's here and who's not, so I have to count.
I don't even look.
You look cool, Greg.
Yeah, he's all bundled up.
And I got snow pants on that you can't see, but yeah.
Cool, cool.
Hey, it's nice to see Justin on. Usually I just see his phone number or his name.
All right, so being seven o'clock, well, all right, one of my computers says seven, one says six fifty-nine, so about the phone says seven. Being that it's seven o'clock, I will open tonight's meeting of our selectmen. And let me start with the script for remotely conducted open meetings. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are here, are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
I'm here.
Excellent, and I am here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
I know Justin is here and Chief Stowers is here, so right now I think that that is good. All right. Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings, gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have public, all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for tonight's meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs, and we recommend that members in the public follow along, follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I know it otherwise. And again, to follow along, you would go to, the easiest way is to go to, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen page from the town's site, go to tonight's date and pack it, and then the agenda will come up and you'll be able to follow along with the documents there. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide their comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only, and once the chair has a list of all public commentators, will call each one by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken and this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, all of that being said, the first, the next item on the agenda are public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the acceptance of minutes for December 15th. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the unapproved meeting minutes, so December 15, 2020, as shown, authorizing use of a digital signature for proof.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And Jeff? Anybody have any discussion regarding the minutes? All right. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, correspondences. I will accept a motion and change a motion.
I move, move to accept and approve correspondences A through E as shown.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. Does anybody have any questions?
I did, I have one quick question. Greg, on the leasing of, potential leasing of space by the state, I assume we have a contact or somebody that we can reach out to, not only at the state level, but also at the local level to encourage folks to, you know, to let them know that they have space. I'm thinking the mill potentially, or other spaces in town that might have open, available space.
I mean, the mill is the primary, so we did send it over to Lincoln Property Group. That's the management leasing agent for Hill and Main. And then we also let the EDC know, just to kind of put the general word out there. So that also includes the main business lines and also Sarah Cressy of the, as of it, the Chamber of Commerce. So, I don't know, you know, it's, I'm not, you can see the list of towns. I mean, they're, they're putting out a wide, a wide net, but yeah, the mill was, the mill was appreciative of us notifying them. I think they did say that they were, they were reached out to specifically as well, but anything we can do to help.
Great. Anyone else have anything regarding any of the correspondences? All right. All in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next is item number four on it, is the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Um, I don't read about what I want to hear about.
I, somebody has their, their mic on, I think. Okay, I'll, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented and authorized use.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, David and Chris, it's time. Does anyone have, so we don't have to name these, because it's all in one consent agenda. We don't need to name the individual.
Right, you're basically reappointing everyone who wanted to be reappointed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments about this? All right. Well, then, all in favor? Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
And thanks for everybody for reappointing.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Next, we have item number five, which is more retirements.
Yep, two big ones.
Two at once. The first is, the first that we'll speak to is obviously Mike Guzzo, Finance Director. And I just want to say a couple of things, because I was thinking about it the other day, and I have to tell you that I can't believe I've only known him for less than three years, because I feel like I've known him forever, and he's always been very helpful to me, and he's entertained all my questions. He's always responsive, and when I was really thinking about it, I, I can't believe it's only been less than three years. But I really appreciate everything he has done. If I could pick three words to describe him, it would be caring, dedicated, and smart, and...
He left out the last one. What was that all about?
Yes, the last one, I'll do whatever.
So, but you know, he, I know he's been instrumental in helping me understand the finances of the town and helping move the town forward, and he is dedicated and has been dedicated to this town for several years. And, you know, as we've mentioned in the past, you know, he and Cheryl really played an integral part in getting us to where we are today. And, you know, it's, it really says something when you have the auditors come in and commend our town for the practices that we, how far we've come, and how far we continue to move towards being fiscally responsible. And without his dedication, you know, I don't think we would have been where we are today. So I just personally want to say thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things that I found the same thing, because every time I reached out to him, he always had the answer for me, and he took the time out to be very explicit, and I learned a lot from him. And I would add the word passionate, because not only he's dedicated, but he was very passionate, because he just loved what he did, what he does, because he still does it. But we very much appreciate everything you've done for the town. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. The only person who's there, who's on the board who was there when I started is Dave, so Dave's known me probably the longest, seven years. I thank everybody for their compliments. The only drawback to this whole thing is that the person who I worked with and who I considered instrumental and always looked at everything at the glass half-full is not here to share it with me, and that's my only negative of the whole thing. But she is, she, I know she's watching tonight, and she's watching over everything, and it's been a good seven years. I have no regrets. I have no regrets, and I see Steve, Steve and I have become very good friends in the last couple, you know, seven years. And I thank everybody for their compliments, and I also, there's one thing that Greg probably has not mentioned, is that Cheryl and I, before she was retired, we basically talked about what we would do after retirement, and we had made a commitment that in the interim, should there not, should there be an empty seat in both positions, that we would help out for a couple of days, at least for a couple of months. So, and I will keep that commitment that she and I made to each other, so.
We really appreciate that, Mike.
Can I say a couple of words about Mike?
I was gonna say, I'm sure, because I know David wants to say something too, and so go ahead, Chris. You go first, and then I'll let David speak.
I, I just want to say that Mike, I know when Mike came, there were a lot of holes in our systems and our processes in the, in the financial area, in the financial department, and a lot of missing information, and, you know, he was, he's been doing it since then, but he kind of restructured the way the whole department is working and the way the information flows, and I think, I wasn't, I don't know how long I've been here, but I wasn't too far behind. Mike come in, and a lot of the things that he changed and a lot of things that he did along the way were not popular with some of the people already in place in town, and to Mike's credit, he continued and persevered and did it the right way, and it got us to a point where we're at today. So Mike, I just want to thank you for your perseverance, despite, you know, some people not wanting to change, and change is difficult, no matter whether it's good or bad, or who's making it, but you stuck it out and forced the changes that you thought were necessary as the leader of your department, and it's, it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah, Mike, you know, thank you for, you know, the times that we spent, especially early on in your, your time, where we spent time sitting in your office, just talking and getting to know one another a little bit, and talking about our theories on the ways things should go and work. But your honesty and your, you know, I know, I know you'll probably remember a couple of nights where we sat in a cold car, sitting and talking, talking about, you know, how things can be improved, not only in your department, but in Town Hall and in Maynard in general. And, you know, those types of conversations build a level of trust and friendship that I think have gone a long way. And I very much appreciate, having gotten to know you, I very much appreciate your, you know, your efforts on behalf of the community, and I wish you a lot of luck, and I hope that you don't make yourself a stranger, and that you'll come back and visit and say hello. And, you know, I'll miss running into you whenever, whenever I was in Town Hall, even if it was like on a, on an off day where nobody else would be there, Mike Guzzo would be there, and that's, that's, that's something that we'll all miss, I think. So thanks, Mike, and congratulations.
Thank you. On a humorous note, I do have to make something that Chief Noble is on. When I first came in September of thirteen, no one knew who I was, and the police, someone in the police department came over, and I ended up being in the police beat, but in the police beat, it said it was the treasurer and not the finance director or town accountant. So to correct that, I am, it was me who basically should have been in the police beat and not the treasurer, so. Now everybody's used to me being there on a Saturday, so.
Exactly. I think we think something's wrong if you're not there on a Saturday, Mike.
Yes. They come in and check to make sure they're now.
Jeff, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just add, I, you know, in addition to what everything that everybody else has said, I really appreciate your directness, Mike. You've helped me learn a lot about the town finances. You know, in a group situation like this, you're always willing to give the information direct. You don't sugarcoat it. You don't push it through too hard. You just lay it on the table in a way that's still open to a cooperative team player environment, so I really appreciate that, in addition to the depth of knowledge that you bring to the table that everybody has already mentioned.
Thank you very much, everyone. Which really appreciated. I'll miss you all.
Yeah, we'll, we'll miss you too, but I heard you're not going to be going away that soon, so.
We called you honest, Mike, and then you fill in with that one?
No. I'm glad you, because I have dyspeasies right now, so.
Dave and Mike, what was it, the cold cars? You guys couldn't afford to turn the heat on? What happened?
Sometimes, sometimes, you know, Town Hall shuts down, and everybody gets pushed out, or you're, or you're at a meeting at the library, and you know.
The library was two of those.
Had good memories.
Let's leave it at that.
Yeah.
All right, so I do want to obviously give Greg a chance to say something as well. I realize that this is a board of selectmen meeting, but I know if there's anything that you wanted to add, or, you know, there's been a lot said, but I just want to double check.
No, I mean, Mike, I think Mike knows, we have a, we have a good relationship. We have a lot of back and forth, and budget season means we see each other a lot. And, and we're definitely not always on the same page, but we usually walk out the room on the same page, and, and that's, that's, so I appreciate his, I know he's gonna miss our special meetings that we have, but the two people I talk to most in Town Hall is HR and Finance. So I, he, yeah, he means a lot to me. We're gonna miss him, but he knows all that. Five minutes, he's good.
Very good. All right. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say about this before, before we move on? All right. Well, we just wanted to make sure, we couldn't let you leave without publicly acknowledging how much you mean to us and how much you mean to the town, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we are going to, we're gonna move on to another retirement for Steve Weiner. How are you?
Okay, thanks.
Now, I don't have, I know that, I know that Mike has been here for seven years, but I know you have been here for longer. How long have you been in Maynard?
Almost twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years. That's fantastic. And you were one of the people who worked really hard to get the library to where it is now, correct?
You mean the new location, yes.
Yes, exactly. The new location, which is a wonderful space. I do want to thank you for your dedication over these past, obviously, twenty-six years. The library is, you know, unfortunately, right now, not to where we would obviously all love to see it, just because of COVID. But even now, you've continued to work hard to get access. The public gets different access to either different programs, or I know that you've done some outside things. You're really trying to think outside of the box, and, and we really appreciate you still opening up and letting us benefit from it.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have anything they'd like to say for Steve?
Yes, Mike. I've known Steve for seven years, and Steve, basically, we have been, have become pretty good friends. We talk at least once a week over the last two or three years. And I've appreciated his honesty, and I appreciate working with him, and most of all, his friendship, and thank you, Steve.
My pleasure.
And Steve, I'd like to just recognize your retirement. Congratulations. And I think, you know, when, when people talk about moving into a community, many people talk about the schools, but there are a lot of people who talk about the importance of the library that, that a community has when they move here. And, you know, Justine touched upon the new location, but not only the new location that you have driven to, you know, driven us to, which is, you know, an unbelievable library, reuse of space and everything else. But beyond that, the programming that we have in our library is really, really top-notch when, when you look at it in comparison to some other towns that have a lot more resources than we do. I think the fact that your, your staff seems so happy, your staff seems so engaged, your staff wants to please the community, whether it be from, you know, the childhood, you know, children's librarian, all the way up to every employee that you have. And that's a testament to your leadership and to what you understand about the community that you live in, and that you, you know, that you have basically built this, this library. And I also hear a lot about your relationship with the trustees and how that helps to keep the library strong. And so all of these things are leadership and are, you know, just ways to show that, that you have been a huge asset to our community and to our library, and, you know, everybody in town owes you a great debt of gratitude. So thank you. Congratulations. Good luck in your retirement. And again, same as Mike, don't be a stranger.
Well, thank you, but I guess, I just, I wouldn't respond by saying that it's, it's not that hard to do a job. I didn't have a community that wants a lot, public library service like Maynard has wanted over the years. And so we were able to tap into that, and that was our success, that this was something the community was really looking for.
Yep. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? I also, one other thing that I want to say is that I do find it impressive that both Mike and Steve have offered to, you know, possibly, if, if needed, could come back if we need them, you know, occasionally or something. And I think that's a testament to the town that we're, that we're in, and that the environment that we, that we offer is, that sometimes we might be hard to leave.
Or, or they're hard to replace. I think, I think.
That too, that too. That too, that too.
But I, if, if anything, I think that's a, that's a big point I want to make is that we're not going to get a new Mike Guzzo or a new Steve Weiner or anyone else as we're going through, we're going through a, a good amount of transition right now and it's, it's not going to be the same. Like we're, we're on pretty high highs when it comes to the, the staff that I got. I'm really, I'm really grateful for the staff that I got and there's, you know, it's going to be tough to, to get this new turnover and whatnot. They're going to leave a good legacy. It's some big shoes to fill. So I appreciate, even in the short time that I've been working with them, I appreciate all the, all the patience and cooperation and sort of mentorship to a large degree that they've given me. So, and I, I look forward to whoever, whoever is going to come in, I just know that it's not going to be the same. So thanks, Mike, and thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, anyone else have anything?
I'll just add to what David said, I've been to the library numerous times, the staff is always helpful, they're always friendly, it's just a great community space and I've been in it many times and it's always a pleasant experience. So my hat off to you and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations, congratulations, Mike, and congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
All the best to you guys.
Thank you.
Right, and we'll move on to item number six, which is the Marble Farm Park and Historic Site, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to endorse the proposed application for Community Preservation Act funds in support of a Marble Farm Park and Historic Site project as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, thank you. Greg?
Right, so this was a request by David Mark, who everyone is kind of renowned around town for being the local historian, he's, he's involved in multiple committees and it's been his project to work on the Marble Farm site for a couple of years now. And this is the next evolution of, of his work towards that. So David, can you give a quick, they've, they've seen the materials provided, but can you kind of give like a big, a quick summary of what you've done and where you want to go and what you're asking the board?
Yes, and first of all, I appreciate the board giving this opportunity. We also have on this call, Justin DiMarco, who's the town employee supervises this. And I think we have DJ Shagnon in a purple shirt and glasses and a beard, who is the actually representative from a landscape architect firm, which has been working on this. So the real quick timeline is last year, the board approved and CPC funded eight thousand dollars to hire a landscape architect to perform a feasibility study and propose a budget to convert the town-owned space at the corner of Rockland Avenue and Route 27 into a park and historic site. CB Landscape Architects, represented by Dennis DeShite, accepted the contract, completed the work for seven thousand, seventy-five dollars and submitted a plan, which you should have before you. What's most important, you should have a diagram of the site and you should have the most recent budget, which has a total of one hundred and one thousand dollars, one thousand one hundred and seventeen sixteen dollars. So the initial proposal was for a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars and change. I divided that work into what I considered necessary and nice to have, which resulted in a revision to eighty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one. Then CPC, after recently asked that some of the nice be restored to this budget, so that proposed budget would cover everything we're trying to accomplish. So we now have this revised budget, a hundred and one thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. What was restored is the access bridge from the rail trail, benches, a bike rack. It leaves out some of the very extensive landscape that had been part of the proposal and instead leaves a lot of wild growth. That's pretty much where we stand right now. I'll be presenting this to CPC on the twentieth of this month and I ask that I present this to the board and make sure that we're still, the town is still resolved to accept this idea of adding a new park that is part of the, let's call it the, one of the gems on the rail trail to make its official parks.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for David regarding this project?
Couple of quick, first one, first off, David, thank you for the efforts in getting this all prepared and before everybody. Question for Justin, if you can estimate, what are your thoughts on average costs for maintenance for an annual maintenance?
So CPC, sorry, this is Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. CPC posed the same question to David and myself and David had some correspondence. Regarding the park, the DPW will not be able to provide any maintenance services for this situation due to our budget constraints. David and his volunteers have been maintaining the park for the past couple of years and I believe part of his maintenance plan is to continue to do that with his volunteers, but I have stressed the point to both CPC and to David, that the DPW will not be able to take in, take on any more maintenance services and that is including mowing, weeding, anything outside of, you know, some repair work that might have to do, have, have to be absorbed for a fence that surrounds the foundation for safety, things like that, we may be able to absorb, but not the day-to-day operation of maintenance. The rough cost for a professional service is probably going to be about twenty thousand dollars a year for just the bare bone minimums maintenance in regards to this design. Knowing this from the beginning, I actually knew from the second David put this application in that the DPW was not going to be able to provide maintenance service. Meeting with both David and DJ, we kind of started to navigate a design that was very minimal maintenance to begin with, kind of focused on the historical aspect, as David will tell you in full length, just kind of, kind of put it to a situation where it's a passive park, minimum maintenance and something that can still be enjoyed and become something that Maynard can be proud of without putting the cost burden on, on our services.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's a little concerning to, that if we would have a, a park that would go into any type of disrepair, because, you know, the last thing you want is along the bike path, which is, you know, going to be visited by a lot of out-of-town folks, that it does not become something of, you know, and I know it won't, at least at the outset, everybody's got great intentions of, of an eyesore for the community where it's like, what the heck is that? I also am reminded of the efforts with Fowler Field, when, you know, we put all sorts of money into the Fowler Field and then the time came, okay, what are we going to do about maintenance? And everybody went, oh, and it became a concern. So something for the, for the board to consider as we go forward. Now I forget what my second question was going to be after.
David, I've got a moment to address your first question.
Yeah, please.
CPC asked the same question and just to provide an estimate and a description. So we've tried to really have the development of the park, take care of a lot of the anticipated maintenance, taking out the dead and diseased trees, taking out the brush piles, filling the foundation itself with landscape cloth and six inches of pea ground, so we don't have to work on growth growing up inside the foundation itself or the borders, which should be getting landscape cloth to prevent growth and mulched. And so what has been since volunteers cleared this space in two thousand eighteen has primarily been cutting back some of the, the, again, weed growth, wild growth, putting down grass seed, mowing the lawn and raking the leaves. And that's been conducted to date and then planting daffodils. That's all been conducted by volunteers from the Aspirera Rail Trail Organization and the Trail of Flowers Organization, obviously both of which I'm active in. And their intention is to continue to provide, you know, this basic maintenance, lawn mowing, leaf raking as, as part of our commitment to the park.
David, there's no trash receptacles there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And there should not be.
Yeah, okay.
Because right now, trash does not accrue, but once you put a trash can there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Trash will show up.
Yep.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that, because that was the theory about trash receptacles downtown, same exact thing. Anyway, the, the other question I had is, do we know, and this, I guess, might be directed more to Greg, but you, and if you don't know the answer, I understand, are there any other historic projects that are going to be presented to the CPC that would draw on this, their account in this regard? In other words, in other words, does this, would this be pushing any other project potentially to the side?
I, you know, I don't know, I'm sorry, but I, I can ask CPC.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter because we're just being asked to give our, you know, our endorsement to the project anyway, so.
And I think if I could answer, looking at what was proposed, I think the answer is no, and one of the facts that they came back to me and said, could we increase the budget, basically by twenty thousand over what you came in with, suggests that they see themselves as having the funds for this.
Good point. Okay.
One of the few times as a landscape architect, this is DJ Shagnon, the landscape architect, that I've been asked to increase the budget on the project as it went through committees. It's an interesting change of pace.
David, do you have a, a written down list of the maintenance activities you expect will be done by volunteers, whether through the Trail of Flowers, just to make it easy to, to transfer to whoever is willing to take it on?
You know, given my years of experience on the site, it's, it's mowing the lawn, raking the leaves, clearing any, you know, dead branches that fall from the trees that remain, and that's the routine maintenance that needs to be required on the site. You know, again, we're not planting plantings that require extensive management. The Trail of Flowers will continue to preserve the, the flower, the daffodil bed along the border of the wall, which requires, you know, some planting every year, but there's not a lot of high maintenance plans in this, in this plan. Is there something I missed, Justin?
I was going to say, both David and Justin, through the whole process, have been very clear to CBA that the goal was a, as minimal maintenance as possible to, to avoid any, any budget strain other than, you know, running a lawnmower.
Would it be left natural in the winter? In other words, the bridge, would that need to be plowed or in any way shoveled for safety purposes?
Well, no, it shouldn't need to be. There'll be enough drainage gaps through it and it, yeah, there's, there's other ways to get into the site and everything else also.
Yeah, two, two points. One is, we don't plow the rail trail and second.
Correct, I get, I get that.
And there is a wide lawn access also from the rail trail to the site, so you can choose to go in either of two, there's a third way, there's steps, but there's a, at least a ten-yard wide lawn, level lawn access, and there's also the bridge. So there's, you know, multiple ways, there's a gravel access by the parking lot, multiple ways into the site other than the bridge.
Does the backside of Butt, Rockland Ave, or is there, is there area between Rockland Ave and where the park begins?
I don't, there's no separation, I don't think.
No, there's no separation, it borders.
Right up against Rockland Ave and another section of DPW property as well.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions for David or DJ or Justin? I think David covered a lot of the questions, so they're, they're all, they're all good ones. I think, I think we've all learned our lessons as far as looking, asking more questions as far as maintenance and, and what, you know, making sure that we're doing our due diligence before we endorse a project.
Well, we just appreciate your volunteerism, David, and making, you know, the area much more appealing. I think it's important that, you know, that stays that way and people that come from out of town will appreciate seeing that.
Yeah, and I'll say this, one of the very oldest homesteads in all of what became Maynard, settled around seventeen oh five and also represents probably the, the best example of stonework in the entire town and deserves to be preserved.
Thank you for doing that.
Also, I've seen numerous people plant flowers along the rail trail since you started doing it at that site, so I appreciate the, the, not just your own dedication, but the fact that you get other people to volunteer with you.
Yeah, we are now raising thousands of dollars each year to, to cover plantings and continue to expand. This year, we, in addition to Maynard, planted, enacted and planted in Marlboro and it was just be an ever-growing project.
Fantastic. All right, anyone else have any other questions for anyone? All right, then, all in favor, sorry, my computer just turned off, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am yes. So thank you very much for your work on this, David. Thank you for, for continuing to honor Maynard's history and, and help us move it forward.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Number seven, town engineering services. I will entertain a motion on this one.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the contract extension in terms as provided for on-call consulting services between Vanessa Hang in Brussels Inc., VHB, and the town of Maynard, the calendar year twenty twenty-one, in authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
I second that.
Thank you, Armand. Greg, you want to speak to us?
This, that this is the, the same contract that we've had with VHB and you are familiar with the particular engineer that we get from VHB, Wayne Amico, who comes once a week and works closely with Justin DiMarco primarily with DPW, but also, you know, there's kind of like two, two parts to his job. Primarily it is to be the, the engineer for the Public Works, but he also provides pre-review for municipal services. So if the planning board needs something reviewed or otherwise, that's, in other words, we're not changing the, those terms, like the, the scope is, is still the same. This is just another extension to that contract and, and I think it's satisfactory, satisfactory work that he's, that, you know, VHB primarily, the way he is providing us. So I, I would recommend the board approve this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Justin, do you have anything to say on this? I know you wrote a memo regarding the contract extension as well, but do you have any, any thoughts either?
No, I'd just like to add, you know, a city, a town like Maynard that has a city infrastructure typically has a civil engineer on staff. Um, we're kind of that, that tweener, you know, we are really a town, but we have city infrastructure. So this, this contract service kind of helps us fill the gap without fully enveloping an engineering staff, full-time engineering staff, like you see in some of the larger public works facilities without, throughout the state. So far in my time here, Wayne Amico and VHB have fulfilled all of the roles that are necessary. Design review, standard review, they provide civil engineering stamps so they can, they can write off some of the designs and confirm some of the designs that some of our in-house staff might not have expertise on. So this is a valuable tool for the town of Maynard as a whole. Public Works does utilize the majority of this, but Public Works is involved in almost everything within the town of Maynard, so really this is a benefit to the whole.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions, comments? All right. Then, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. All right. Item number eight, recreational marijuana retailer license. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve an issue of the retail marijuana package goods store license for Green Star Herbals Inc. at twenty-four Main Street with manager as Thomas Morey authorized the use of digital signatures if approved.
A second.
Thank you, David. Greg?
So this is, should be the final step from the Board of Selectmen towards this license for the recreational marijuana. You know, it's a, we call it a package goods, it's kind of like, it's similar to an alcohol retail, but this is for marijuana. And so I think we have Tom Morey here on the line and I believe Chief Noble was going to or is scheduled to do his final inspection. A temporary occupancy permit was, certificate was issued to Tom Morey and for Green Star, but the license itself is contingent upon, if you. Um, but the license itself is contingent upon, if you prove it, is contingent upon those final inspections. Um, the security inspection by Chief Noble and I believe a health inspection by Cal Poly for the Board of Health. So I don't know, so Chief Noble, did you get a chance to go over there?
Yeah, I went down there this afternoon and inspected it, and then I went back, uh, about two hours ago, uh, to do the testing of the alarm systems and the camera systems, and everything is up and running and working, so. Uh, I haven't had a chance to write it up, but I will write up that they are, uh, in compliance with their security plan.
So I believe once, you know, the, we'll notify the, or, yeah, more Tom can notify the CCC that, that he has this license in hand, once he fulfills those final requirements of the inspection. And then, and then it goes back to the CCC, and I believe they may have to do one more inspection and then he can open. But, uh, he may, he may be able to speak better to, on that end of it. On our end, this is, this is, I think, the last step, um, for him. Tom, do you want to introduce yourself and tell us?
Yes, yes. Uh, good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody again. Um, it's been a long, long road here, but we're getting close. Um, also here I have Mike Allen, who is the, uh, chief of security for, um, Green Star Herbals. And, um, just wanted to give you an update. We, we, we feel we're about ready to, uh, uh, have the, uh, the whole operation ready. We're, um, you know, committing to the uh, CCC, um, for the inspection. And, um, we inspect, you, you know, we expect that to, to have, have us operational by March. So that's where we are right now. Um, it's a beautiful spot. We're really excited. And, um, I think it's gonna be a great spot for Maynard.
I, I have a couple of questions, um, just, just out of curiosity more than anything. Um, the first is, so, you know, uh, we do need to have the, uh, inspection through the Board of Health, correct?
Yes.
That been scheduled with you, Mr. Morey?
Yes, it's been scheduled for nine o'clock on Friday with, uh, Kelly.
Okay, perfect. Um, and the other question is that the ten, and this is more procedural, is the temporary occupancy permit is only valid through the end of February? Now, how does that work? So, so if, if you're not essentially gonna open until March, is this just so people can be in the building until? With.
Yeah, I think there's like one extra electrical issue. And, um, we're, we're working through that right now, so either way that'll be done, uh, I'd say within the next two weeks.
Okay.
And then that's, that, that's why it's contingent.
But you're right, like, it, it, he will have to petition the building commissioner for another inspection to get a, like, you do need a full, um.
Right. So, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. Um, anyone have any questions? Anyone else have any questions? All right. Well, then. Um, actually, so point of, point of, or do we need to say that you're gonna hold on to the, uh, license until all the approvals go through, or that, that's fine in the motion as it is? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
You don't need to, you, you're right. I mean, you could say y- your approval is, or the release of the license is contingent upon final inspections, um, but that's, 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 that's understood that Becky the license, like she has it in her office, and then when she gets, everybody check the list, then she gives the license. So I'm, I'm confident, you know, you can just have the motion as is.
Perfect.
When we, when we have, uh, contingency motions for liquor licenses, we typically do, my recollection is, say that it's contingent upon payment of all taxes and fees and everything else. Uh, is that correct, Becky?
You're muted.
But in the case of, um, Green Star, um, because it is temporary with just such small finite pieces, uh, I, I think it's, it's running up just a little bit different than the, um, yearly liquor. And we'll, we'll be better at it next year when we renew if there's issues that come up at that point, um.
Okay, so you know that the intent, the intent is not to give the license out until all these are met, so.
But if the board would like, I mean, you can, you can revise your, you can amend your motion and, and add, you know, uh, not, you know, not to release the license until all the inspections are satisfied.
Okay, all right. Uh, David, uh, does anybody want to do that?
Yeah, I'll move to amend. If, um, I guess it could be better done. Who, who made the motion? Was it Chris? Uh, Jeff, so would you accept a friendly emotion to add the, uh, versus having to take a mo- a motion to amend and then voting on a motion to amend and then voting on the, the amended motion? If you accept the friendly amendment, we're good to go.
I'll accept a friendly amendment, David.
So do you want this back in front of the board before it's officially?
It shouldn't be.
No. All right, so, then all in favor? Uh, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am yes. All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, and we'd like to, uh, invite you down for a tour very soon. So I, I, I think I talked to Becky about that, and she's gonna try to arrange everything there, so we'd love to have you come down and see the operation, and, uh, like I said, I really believe it's gonna be a great, great, uh, place for, for Maynard. I think it's gonna put Maynard on the map. We're, we're gonna run a professional, you know, operation. It's gonna be high-class and, uh, you know, I, I think it's gonna be great for both of us.
Great, thank you. We look forward to seeing you.
Yes, same here.
All right, moving on to item number nine, licensed use town-owned land. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I just, I guess I have a question before we make the motion is, um, the, the property we're talking about is the area to the left of this, of the restaurant, correct? With the way they have the outs- outside seating anyway. It's not, we're not talking about nail or court, the, uh, that is used by the, the other restaurant.
No, no, I, well, I mean, that's, it's good to clarify. So, right, if you're looking at El Huipil, and then on the left, and, and they have that beautiful mural on the wall, that, and then in that land.
Yeah, okay.
Up to it, which we then, we actually extended, um, what, what they're, we extended what, what they were approved to use for the outdoor seating, kind of expand their outdoor seating, but, but that land, that, it's, which is all kind of cement anyways, it's, it's public property.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was what this was approving and, and not the nail or court stretch. You know, the road that we gave, that we gave during COVID for, uh.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that was for Azuca, it wasn't for El Huipil.
I, that's, that was the point.
That's true, yeah.
Oh, they're already using this land, correct?
Yeah.
So is this a renewal?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, that, yes, because we just like re, we kind of redo the, the couple of years.
So this is not COVID-related at all, then?
No, it was, it's coincidence.
All right, so.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Uh, go ahead, Armand.
Yeah, move to approve, uh, license to, um, uh, where's it, to enter and use the town-owned land, uh, for outdoor seating and food establishment purposes by El Huipila Restaurants Incorporated at fifty-one R Main Street for a term of one year with an option for additional, uh, one-year extension, authorized use of digital signature for proof.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, uh, Greg, would you like to speak to this?
Actually, so what I was gonna say is just that, that this is the, I don't know, what, maybe fourth, um, version of this for a fourth, fourth time, or maybe the third time that the board has, has reviewed this. Um, so I recommend to approve it because I think it's a good relationship that we have. Actually, I think they're on the call right.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
That, that we have with the owners, um, represented by Alma, and I can see her now, actually.
Yes, I can hear you now, too.
So I, I think, I think it's a good deal that, that, that we have with them, like, we're, we're providing a sort of expansion of, of their retail, of their, of their, of their services, and I think it's been good, and, and we've been, she's been very responsive to the town, and anyways, I, I recommend we continue this and approve this.
Okay.
How's it going, Alma?
Uh, we're doing good. Thank you. It's slow right now, very slow, but we're surviving.
Okay.
Very good. Um, anyone have any questions for Greg, Becky, or Alma and, uh, Alonso?
No.
No. All right. Uh, then, all in favor? David?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so continue on.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Happy New Year.
Same to you. Happy New Year to you guys.
Okay, bye.
I'm hungry.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right, exactly.
We're still open.
Did you hear that, Jeff?
All right. Bye. All right, moving on to item ten, a transfer of liquor license, alcohol license to new location. And I will entertain a motion for this.
I'll move to, I'll move to approve the retail alcoholic beverage license to reflect the change in location of Art Specialties LLC from forty-three Nathan Street to twenty-five Nathan Street as presented, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff and Armand.
Right, can I just pop, can I just interrupt for a moment?
Good, I was gonna turn it over to you, so go ahead.
Hey, all right, no, I just wanted to double check because I'm reading my notes, uh, as a reminder myself into the board that, that, Becky, have we heard back from the ABCC about this?
Yep, you're muted now.
We did receive an email from Otter, um, this evening that said that, um, he should be hearing within three to five days on the approval from the ABCC. So if we can add it to the, um, next meeting on the twelfth, we should be good to roll with this, so I would.
Should we withdraw the motion?
The motion, yeah.
I withdraw the motion.
All right. Do you need a second, or do you just withdraw?
I don't think you have to sec, I don't think they have to second, you just.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, sounds good, then we will. So we have, so yes, we are having a meeting, um, next week. Um, it was primarily, um, just one talk, one topic, but we can throw that on there as well.
Oh, okay, that's what I was gonna ask you, all right.
Yeah, does that, I mean, does that work for everyone? I mean, I, I think it's a quick business.
Yeah.
If, if we get it, and if we don't get it, then.
Right, and then we'll just move it to the next. Um, so actually, speaking of that, before we move on, a quick question. Is our next meeting not the twelfth, but the, the one after the twelfth? Is it going to be the following week, or is it gonna be the twenty-sixth?
It's scheduled for the twenty-sixth.
It is scheduled as twenty-sixth, okay. I just wanted to double check that. Okay.
No meeting on the nineteenth?
No, I thought, I think that it was originally scheduled the way it was because of, uh, school vacation week, and people take that week off, but with COVID, things have changed and, you know, people might not be going away, so, uh.
So, I mean, we can, we definitely keep it as is if, if we want to. I just, I, I was thrown off because it's not every other.
Yeah.
First and third, but.
Bye, bye, me.
Yeah, we'll just keep it, no worries. All right, then we'll move on to, uh, item number eleven, the new fire station. Um, I will entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion. Hopefully I could pronounce the name, the.
Dataless.
All right, thank you. Um, move to approve the contract with Dataless Projects Incorporated for the services as owner's project manager for the construction of the new fire station in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Authorization use of digital signature for proof.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. All right, Greg?
So, um, Dataless Projects, who's represented by Alicia Monks, who I believe is on the line. Uh, hi, Alicia. So I, I was introduced to Alicia, came on board two and a half years ago. And, um, and she's been instrumental, of course, in, in the, in the progress that we've made, and she's also very patient. Uh, but here we are, we're, we're moving forward, and, um, so she works very closely with Chief, of course. Chief Stowers is on the line as well, and, um, so this is the, here we are, like, this is it, like, we're, now we're, we're getting into the contract phase um, for her services and all of Dataless, like, she's, she's representing what Dataless kind of brings, um, to the project. And she, you know, she, we really, she kind of holds our hand through this whole thing, whether it be from the, from, throughout the whole process, from contracting to, um, as she already has, but now we're into contracting, subcontracting, and then, uh, kind of oversight uh, of the project as, as it develops, and then into commissioning. And therefore, and, and you can see the next item down is just a part of this project to build a building.
And I'll just add, you're not asking me, but I'll just add that our fee includes for during the construction phase that we'll have a representative from our office on-site every day during construction to over, to oversee and make, to, um, have eyes on and, and safeguard the town's interest during construction.
Excellent. All right. Uh, does anyone have any questions for either Chief or Greg or Alicia?
And this amount was budgeted for, so this, this is no change in this amount, it's.
I was actually wondering if we had, and it's, I, I didn't get a chance to ask before the meeting, but if we had any, if there was, if there was any leftover from the last, because from the OPM to now.
I don't know.
From the eight hundred, uh, Chief, I can't, we can't hear you.
Moving, Chief, but we can't hear you.
But it doesn't say you're muted.
I don't know. I don't know, I, I can look into it. I can look, see, and see what the balance was from the.
Curious.
There's about eighty thousand dollars in there.
Okay, okay.
All right, there you go.
And so does that mean that whatever we're do, what, because I know that we, you've been instrumental, uh, Alicia, for, with helping us move through this phase. When we sign this contract, is that when this new timeline with this money begins, or is there still items that we're gonna owe from up until now? Now, okay.
We're all set, all the way through, and we had to put an end date, um, uh, constructions anticipated to start, we're gonna, hopefully, we're planning to pencil then to go to bid January twentieth, so then plus or minus two months for the bid process, and then contract time, hopefully they'll be starting construction, you'll start seeing movement on-site beginning of April, something like that, for them to be able to get going, so we're allowing, um, a little over a year for them to go. We put the end, an end date at the end of September, but if, if for whatever reason we have to extend it, it's not, I don't think it's a big deal to, um, it would just be a, a written time agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, this, this, uh, three twenty-five does not come out of the amount allocated by town meetings, uh, and the vote, the recent vote, it's a different, it's, it's from previous, previous chunk of money?
No, it comes out of the attempt debt.
So, yes, I think.
Comes out of the money that you voted at town meeting.
For, for the, that's my question.
Once we, the chief sits down and everybody sits down and figures out a timeframe, then the new treasurer will be able to start the process of, uh, borrowing, starting to borrow the money. It'll be one of the first things the new treasurer will be doing, and I'll be working with her to do it, so.
The answer is yes, David.
Yeah, just yes, yeah.
Now, meaning approve the bar, uh, authority to borrow towards this project.
Yeah.
And so, and all the attributes of this project, their aspects, including an OPM to oversee it.
Right, you proved a total project budget. I'm part of the project, and that project budget includes the construction, which is the biggest line, one line item on there, but it's part of the total project.
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm because Justine had asked about the previous allocation, but that was separate from the, the vote that we just took, so.
I understand the que, that was a good question, Justine. I'm gonna look into that a little bit, and I'll let you know. And I think, I know what you're getting at.
Excellent. Chief, I, I know, I think you're working on both a, a phone and a, and a video now, so go for it.
Nope. You're muted somewhere, Chief. Maybe he lost his voice, is laryngitis?
I saw him on a video this morning, so he was certainly worth speaking then.
I don't know, sorry, Chief.
Can you do sign language?
Sign language? I don't know.
All right. Um, all right, well, so does anyone else have any questions for moving this along? Or before voting on it, actually? All right, well then, all in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So, excellent. And then, um, Alicia, are you able to speak to the procurement, or is that gonna be something the chief's gonna have to speak to?
Um, no, actually, also on the line there, muted at this time, are Sarah Shepherd and Alan Brown. They are the architects that left and speak to this, and I can fill in if there are questions. Alan, you're unmuted, do you wanna talk?
Okay, actually, wait one second, let me just get a motion first, and then we'll, and then I'll circle back, I just wanted to double check.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion for eleven B.
Move to approve proprietary products for the construction of the new fire station as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff and Armand. All right, and Alan Brown, do you want to speak to this? Let's see, I don't hear him either.
So, within the specific, I'll start, and then he can jump in, oop, yeah, just muted, Alan. Uh, within the specifications, there are specific items that, that need to be proprietary. Uh, because that there's things like, and Alan has all the specifics about it, but there's things that, like the the fire pole, there's basically one company, believe it or not, in the United States who makes fire poles. One guy happens to be in Massachusetts. And so generally by state law, you have to have multiple things, you can't have what's called a closed spec, you have to offer, offer options for every bidder. So you can't have, just say, give me that one thing. But there are a couple items they have asked, one is for the fire pole, and I, there's a...
Can you hear me, Alicia?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
There are no...
Sorry.
Specifically all the stuff, go.
Yep, so the fire pole is, is one of them, um, the the foam glass is, is a proprietary product that we put under the brick when it comes down onto the roof. Um, it's just that there's only one company that makes it. Um, the thermal envelope letter, that has to do with, for fire testing of the complete wall assembly, you have to use, um, it has to be the complete setup that was tested, so we need to make sure we get the moisture barrier and the insulation that was tested as one unit, and so that's why we need those to be proprietary together um, for the backup of the brick wall. And then the last one is, and this is more of a request from the town, is to use the encellium, which is the lighting control systems, and I think it's what the town has started to use throughout for helping with, um, oh goodness, uh, energy efficiencies and things for controlling the light systems through town. So that's something that you're already using at your other buildings, and so for ease of maintenance throughout town and having cohesive, you know, between projects, that was also, it is a proprietary item.
Sarah, I think, can you guys, can anybody hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
So I think the other one was the security system.
Because that, we are just gonna, we did, we chose not to make that one proprietary, but they will buy it off the state contract.
Okay.
Which is a... So, so it's not gonna go out to bid in the same way, so you will get that security system, but not as a proprietary item, if that makes sense.
We're not bidding it through the general contractor, we're buying it directly off the state bid list. So you have control over what you select off the state bid list, it's just a, it's kind of a right pocket, left pocket thing, you're gonna pay for it either way, it's just...
But that one, because they can just tie it into our building as like a a component, we can, you know, put all the infrastructure for it in the building, and then you could just buy it and install it. Whereas these other items, you can't really do that with.
Okay. So actually, I have to ask, is the, is the fire pole on the state bid list too, just out of curiosity?
No. No. We want the contractor, that really has to be part of the construction.
Yeah, you really want them to install it and own the structural installation of it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for anyone regarding any of these proprietary letters? All right. Then, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. I notice on the letters, there needs to be a signature, is that you, Greg, or is that me, Beth, is that me?
I think it's you.
Okay.
I believe it's, you know, it might be me as the chief procurement officer, I will let you know.
Okay, you have permission to use my stamp, or I can make time to come sign them.
Put Justine's name on each one.
I appreciate that, so now that you've given your verbal consent.
Yes. And it's unrecorded, got it.
There you go, there you go.
Okay. Great. So then, now we'll move on to item number twelve. We're just considering the proposed water and sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-two as presented. There's no motion tonight, it's more just, we're just gonna hear the presentation, maybe ask some questions. And then we will have a formal public hearing at the February second meeting. So with that, Greg, would you like to say anything? Or we just turn it over to Justin?
I would let Justin. No, because this is, I just help him present, he does the present.
Excellent, all right, so Justin.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for having me, this is Justin DiMarco, Deputy Director for the Town of Maynard. I am joined by Doug Gardner, who is from Pioneer Consulting Group. He is our consultant in regards to our enterprise funding and rate adjustments. Thank you guys for having us, I hope everybody's having a great New Year. It seems like just yesterday, we were talking about water and sewer rates, but it has been a year, it's been over a year since our last adjustment. I know most of the board was intact, and Jeff might be new to this. Part of the conversations last year were to focus on yearly rate increases or yearly rate adjustments, so that we can control incremental costs, so that we don't have peaks and valleys with our rate increases. Given the age and the complexity of our utility system, this is something that we need to, you know, kind of continue to move forward in a yearly process, evaluating and reacting to what we need to address immediately, as we have several large concerns regarding our utility. The biggest concern is water capacity, and water capacity and impacting the community as a whole really holds back development. So this is not necessarily good for us as the community to kind of put up a stone wall for development that can help offset. I think the board, you know, is fully aware of that, but we're proud to present fiscal year twenty-two, which is calendar year two thousand and twenty-one, so our presentation wouldn't become effective post the board's approval until July first, so that we can stay parallel with our budget cycle. So we're ahead of the curve now, so that we can have the conversations, look at the complexities of what our requests are. If you refer to my memo, that's on board docs, I've highlighted some of the large items that this rate would account for, and some of those that it will not account for. I think the board has been fully informed of our ten-year planning process, it's also included again in the, in the board docs, as well as our personnel plan as well. Not much has changed at this point, we've made some progress from last year, we've made some significant strides in-house. For the first time in over thirty years, the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Division completed, well, actually, we're at a seventy-five percent completion of an upgrade of a water main from in-house services, meaning our staff is doing the work that is being done on Martin Street. We should be proud of that, thirty years since we have performed an upgrade to our distribution system. It is very small, but it's a baby step in the right direction. With that being said, I'll let Doug kind of lead the way, Doug has a PowerPoint presentation for our recommendation, and then both myself and Doug will answer any questions the board has moving forward after the presentation. So go ahead, Doug, and I'm assuming you need screen share.
Yeah, let me see if I can do that, just a minute. But I'm also not so great at this, so two seconds, thank you for everyone's patience, just a minute.
This is when you need Megan.
I always need Megan. Doug, try, try now, see if you can share your screen now. I made a film.
Yeah, I cannot.
All right, give me a second.
We were making such good progress, Greg.
I'm such an amateur, I'm such an amateur. I'll never get good at this, this is just to show how badly I am.
You got it, it's coming up.
Oh, Joanna did it. But Joanna, you're not, see, I was more ready than you were, Joanna.
No, now you just click on that thing.
Let me do it, let me do it, let me do it.
Yeah.
Can everyone see the presentation now?
No, I never see Joanna's.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing an agenda.
Joanna, can you stop sharing? I know you're trying to help. See, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the PowerPoint, Joanna, are you still sharing? Can you hit stop share? Okay. Sorry, guys.
All right.
So now what are you guys seeing?
The PowerPoint is there.
Presentation.
All right, very good.
Okay, ready?
Ready. Yes.
Okay, hi, Doug Gardner, nice to see you again. A year's gone by fast, but obviously a lot has happened. So here to present what has occurred with the water and sewer enterprise funds over the last year and make recommendations for fiscal nineteen twenty-two, or twenty twenty-two.
Nineteen twenty-two.
Yeah, it was a good year. So what's occurred since we last met? The good news is consumption has increased. Now, most of that increase is because of COVID, people are home, they're using more water. That won't continue, once everybody gets back to a relative state of normalcy and they're not home as frequently, going back to the offices to work, kids are back in school, all businesses are open, I would expect that the consumption is gonna drop back to pre-print, pre-pandemic level, so where it's been in the past. So this additional revenue should be put into the reserves and should be used to boost the reserves. Eventually, we'll build that reserve total up, and we'll be able to use those funds for capital improvements as we move forward. But this is a, this is a very good step in the right direction for the town. Now, because consumption has increased, so has revenue. And again, that extra revenue will be used to boost the reserves for the enterprise fund. We have to continue to look long-term, you've done a good job over the last few years of looking towards the, towards the future, we have to be proactive, not reactive like we have been in the past. And we need to avoid tunnel vision, again, tunnel vision is just seeing what's directly in front of us, instead of seeing what's out ahead of us. The best way to minimize the rate increases in the future is to look not only at what's occurring today, but what's gonna be coming down the pipe tomorrow, so that we can, we can plan accordingly and start building revenue to pay for those projects. So the fiscal twenty-two water rates, they will fund the following, distribution improvements, funds that will upgrade short-term capital. It'll also fund medium-sized capital, these are one-time projects, not ongoing projects, one-time project, a, something like a pump station might need some upgrade, might need an upgrade. Capital reserves, we want to continue to build on that fund balance that will ultimately strengthen the enterprise fund, and in the long term, it'll help minimize future rate increases. And lastly, the rates are gonna fall, are gonna fund the DEP minimum standards for the department staffing. I believe Justin has gone over with this with you in some detail, so I won't rehash it, but we have included that in this study. The rates are also gonna fund some new debt. Now, the rates already include the debt for, well, for a, which was a million and a half dollars, we discussed that last year. So the rates do increase the principal and interest, include the principal and interest for that piece of debt, but also treatment plant number four is gonna require approximately a million dollars in improvements. We've included a debt scenario for these improvements, so be an extra million dollars in new debt, and I have another slide, two or three slides down the road that will, that'll detail this. And then the higher future consumption totals, again, these are likely to be one-time increases. Any increase will ultimately fund the reserves, and then we'll go to funding capital. And I'm gonna be mentioning the same thing over and over again. Just trying to drive home what the goals and the objectives are of these studies. So we talked about free cash and reserves. This is a slide that I provided to you last year, it's just how free cash is calculated. Last year's free cash balance, less any appropriations from the free cash, plus any excess revenue, plus any turnbacks from fiscal year. We'll give you your certified free cash from DOR. Free cash, reserves, fund balance, whatever you want to call it, and again, this is a slide from last year. Free cash is calculated at the end of the year, it can be used for capital and other one-time expenditures, cannot be used to reduce rates, that's very important. DOR does not set a maximum or a minimum amount, they do look at it, your external auditors look at that number. You're in no danger of getting anywhere where the maximum is, or we're on the lower end of this, so the goal is to get, again, to continue to build the revenue and build the reserves as the year goes, years go on. DOR has been known to question large balances, need to have a plan in place. That's kind of discussion for another day, we're not there yet. I recommend, or my company recommends, that a minimum of fifty percent of the annual direct and debt service cost be in the reserves. So if your direct costs and your debt service totals two million dollars, I recommend that you would have a million dollars in reserves. The current balance for water is five hundred and sixty-one thousand, that was certified as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty. And the good news is that's trending up for fiscal twenty-one. But again, we won't know what the final amount is, or how, how high it's trending until the end of the fiscal year. Over on the wastewater or sewer side, the fund balance is one point two million, so a little bit stronger position than water. And just as side note, the fiscal twenty twenty fund balance was generated primarily through one-time fees. And we did go over that last year, so just reiterating what you probably already know. So, the fiscal twenty twenty-one proposed rate structure, we're recommending that you maintain the same basic rate structure, it's working well for the town, we're moving in the right direction. We're moving in the right direction. We've made a lot of we've made some big steps forward in the last few years. If it's not broken, don't fix it. Just the rate structure seems to work for the town. It includes a minimum charge. A four-step conservation-based flow rate and a conservation-based rate is simply the more you use, the more you pay. Going to recommend that you continue to maintain your out-of-town rates for the customers that you provide water to and other towns. We're recommending that you maintain the private fire protection charges that are existing. Maintain the backflow prevention testing charges that exist. And the rates that we're recommending today are going to be for fiscal twenty-two only. And this is a departure from past practices. Smaller, more frequent increases. What that will ultimately result in is lower rates or lower smaller increases is the best way to describe that. So yearly increases, smaller increases will will grant us some rate stability. So the breakdown of the fiscal twenty-two water rates are as follows. Here say we call that same slide up on my computer here. This is a pie graph of the enterprise fund revenue requirements and revenue requirements is how much money you need to generate through the rate study. So I've given you a pie chart with both percentages in dollars and then down at the bottom, there's a small Excel spreadsheet that shows the breakdown of the categories, the amount in fiscal twenty-one. The amount proposed for fiscal twenty-two and any increase or decrease. And you can see that the increase in the budget or the revenue requirements from fiscal twenty-one to fiscal twenty-two is about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Some portion of that is salaries. Portion of that is purchase services, but the vast majority of it is the new debt that's coming on board. That's what's going to drive your rate in fiscal twenty-two. Okay, so next slide, please. Here is the current versus the proposed water debt. And this slide just shows us the the current debt that exists for fiscal twenty-two out through fiscal twenty-seven and any proposed debt that we know of at this point. There will be additional debt moving forward, but this is what is is what we see happening in the next few years and down at the bottom. The there's a breakdown of that proposed debt. So some of it is well for a some of it is the treatment plant for well number four. And then there's the old Marlboro water treatment facility. That would be, I believe that's White's Pond is what you call it.
Oh Doug, so.
Is that is not correct? Sorry.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to interrupt you just so while we're on this topic right now. So the board fully understands the long-term goal here. Phase three, which would be potentially old Marlboro treatment plant. Process changes pretty much a treatment plant, a treatment plant changeover. The potential is FY twenty-three, but that is dependent on how fast we can have well for a and treatment plant for put online because we can't handle both plants being inoperable at the same time. So that peak is that potential right now. When I say one percent design, so think a conceptual estimate here of a twelve million dollar plant, that's that estimate right now. And that's that peak you see in red. That could be FY twenty-three, it could be FY twenty-four. It just depends on how fast we're able to procure services for well for a and the treatment processes changeover at treatment plant four. For the community, we want to piggyback this immediately because capacity is an issue. So we really want to see well for a come online with the treatment plant well for at the same time so that that plant is fully operational. And then we're able to take offline old Marlboro and procure all the processes and constructions so that we get to a point where we can start to sustain growth. We have to play this game right now because we don't have the ability to take a plant fully offline and and actually produce enough water to sustain our current situation. So it's a very chess-like process that we're doing right now. So this potential debt scenario might change a little, but I really want you to focus on next year's FY twenty-three rates. Might be high with water and that is because we're going to propose the old Marlboro treatment plant changeover, but that might get pushed off to FY twenty-four. Just depends on how fast we can procure our current situation. Does that make sense?
Yes, but given you have more debt coming off on twenty-four, wouldn't it make sense to hold off on that increase in debt until it balances out? So you're not getting that spike in the middle?
From a financial standpoint, yes, Jeff. From an actual water capacity needs standpoint, no. So we we will still see a steady decline one way or another, which is good. So just think of this and and as you look at this chart right now, the phase three, which is old Marlboro of the water capacity situation, I'm sorry, phase two old Marlboro is our biggest potential phase outside of White's Pond. Phase three is Rockland. So really, if we were able to procure and put online well for a and old Marlboro. We could look at spreading out phase three of Rockland and we it and through many discussions, White's Pond is kind of much further away than people want to admit. Five, ten, fifteen years out. That's when we start to look at how we put it in the financial spectrum because we'll actually have water capacity wiggle room to promote growth and start to enhance the revenue stream. Because if we're able to start to add new housing or any kind of new customers, that revenue stream might also offset some of the potential debt as well, Joe.
Okay, and to answer your question, Jeff. You know, we'll have some wiggle room when that debt will go along as well. So we may just pay temporary interest for the first couple of years. All depends on how the bond is structured and when the first payment will actually be due.
Yeah, we'll look to band the interest. That's what Doug's referring to where we can kind of offset that yearly cost depending on where we are FY twenty-three twenty-four. But that's next. So I just want to keep you looking long-term while we're looking in the short term.
Why does the debt not drop off like it's a hundred and five thousand dollars for well for a every year out through fiscal twenty-seven? Shouldn't as we pay, shouldn't it be decreasing or what am I missing?
Well, it could be structured a couple of different ways, David. It could be structured that it's a declining amount each year. Or it could be just set up that it's a fixed amount for the next twenty years. I tend to go with the most conservative way. So that this is going to be the most expensive way. It could come in a little bit less. So this is just for demonstration.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't know how what the interest rate will be. We don't know. You know, whether it will be level payment or if it'll be declining payment. So I just kind of give you the worst case scenario.
All right.
We haven't bonded it out yet. So that comes when we set the bond and that was something Cheryl also wanted to agree with Doug while she was here. This was set in motion was just to play on the conservative side so that our rates could don't, we don't have to come back and readjust or, you know, move a line item to to appropriate some funding.
So these, these aren't necessarily true numbers. These are sort of descriptive numbers.
Yeah, that scenarios.
To Doug's point, as I looked at it, I saw I saw worst case scenario with numbers remaining high and the same and was just just wanted clarification and that's good. Thank you.
So this this chart just shows you, obviously the red is the proposed, the blue is the existing and just shows as the debt drops off, more debt is going to be added. So if we want to jump to the next slide, please. The actual fiscal twenty-two proposed water rates. We're recommending a an increase in the minimum charge. We're recommending that the minimum charge increase from twenty-two to twenty-five dollars per quarter. So an increase of three dollars. This has been discussed in the last couple times I've been before you that the goal was to raise the minimum two hundred dollars per year. So we're taking that step in this scenario. So the minimum charge is designed to recoup the ongoing costs to the department regardless of whether any water is actually consumed. So you have to read the meter every quarter. You have to collect the revenue associated with that. You have to repair meters. There are fixed fixed costs such as employee costs and other costs as well. The minimum charge is designed to recoup these costs. So that's what that twenty-five dollars each quarter will recoup. We're recommending that we maintain the four-step increasing block water rate. Now, because we're looking at an increase of three dollars in the minimum or base charge. The first five hundred cubic feet known as the first step. We're recommending no increase to that. So everybody will share in that savings, but those who use the least amount will see it'll affect them the most. And that's a that was a deliberate decision on our part through discussions with Justin and others in the town. We felt that because we're going up a little bit on the base charge, we should keep that first step at the present level so that we're not increasing that amount to the to the people who use the least amount of water, those who can least afford to pay for it. So it's a it's an effort to minimize the increase. We're recommending that the second step for all consumption between five hundred and one cubic foot and one thousand cubic feet every quarter. Increase from seven dollars and eleven cents per one hundred cubic feet to seven dollars and thirty-four cents, which is an increase of twenty-three cents for one hundred cubic feet. That's about a three percent increase. The third step, which is for all consumption between a thousand and one thousand and one cubic feet to twenty-five hundred cubic feet is going to increase by twenty-five cents. Seven seventy-two to seven ninety-seven. Again, that's an increase of about three percent. And then for all consumption in excess of the twenty-five hundred cubic feet per quarter. It would be an increase of thirty-seven cents per one hundred cubic feet from the present eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to nine dollars and twenty-five cents, which is an increase of a little over four percent. Now I made mention of the out-of-town customers. They pay a greater rate than the in-town customers. But we're recommending that the percentage increase mirror the in-town resident. So their their minimum charge is going to go up by four dollars per quarter. No increase to the first step in a three, three and four percent increase to the second, third and fourth step. Okay, so if we go to the next slide and we can go back and answer questions afterwards. So the next slide is how will the the water rates impact me? So I've had this is a before and after demonstration. So if I use X amount of water today, I'm paying A. If I use that same amount of water under these new steps, I'm going to be paying B. So I've I've highlighted below an average user and then some higher users. So low user is someone who uses the five hundred cubic feet per quarter. Presently, they're paying thirty-five dollars and ninety cents for their water. That's five hundred cubic feet of water. Their their invoice would increase or their bill would increase to thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. That's three dollars. That's base charge increase. Percentage looks high at eight point three six percent. But it's three dollars over the quarter or a dollar a month. Now, somebody who uses an average amount of water around twenty-five hundred cubic feet in and that's average to to Maynard. Their present bill is one eighty, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Their bill would increase by seven dollars and ninety cents to a hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifteen cents, which is about a four percent increase. So the dollar increase is a little bit higher, but the percentage is actually dropping. And that's because the increase to the to the flow rate is lower than that to the increase in the base charge. So more you use actually the lower percentage you're going to pay. But you're paying more in terms of dollars. Okay, we can jump to the next slide, please.
Could we actually pause on that? So I'm not.
Sure.
Understand why we put, I understand it's a smaller dollar amount, but why we put the bigger percentage difference on the lowest tiered users. It would seem like from protecting the people who are actively trying to conserve water. This is the opposite way we would want to stack the increase.
Well, Jeff, I can speak to that. The reason that is reflective is the base charge, which every user, the four thousand plus users would see that three dollar base charge. So it's reflective as a percentage increase, but really all the five hundred level users, which are your 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 conservative users will only see that base charge increase of three dollars. So no matter what, everybody shares the wealth of that base charge changeover. So we're actually spreading that out to four thousand one hundred and twenty-nine customers. And then everybody that incrementally starts to increase will see the revenue stream. Our base fees are very low for a utility like ours. And as Doug kind of alluded to before, we've been working on slowly trying to do an incremental increase to our base charge to recover the recurring costs, whether we produce water or not.
And Jeff, Jeff, this is a lot like a deja vu conversation because last year I don't know if you were involved in the conversation when we discussed the water rates last year, probably not, but my concern is not the same as yours, but it's the same as yours and that because I come at it from not the the perspective of the person who is conserving as being the one that seems to get hit. My concern has been it's it's the single typically elderly person that is lower on the income scale and on a fixed income that uses the less amount of water that I'm concerned about getting a larger impact percentage wise. And Doug, when you explained it, you said the dollar wise, it's only three dollars.
I don't think I said, I don't think I said only, I said three.
Yeah, well, but you know, but that's that's where I'm I I've grown to accept the argument a little easier. But I'm still, as I was reading the numbers, you know, over the weekend. That's I still got hit with the same point and I was waiting to the end to make my comment and then Jeff made the same one, although from a different perspective. But so and and again, it's the same. I think you'll probably remember it's the same argument I had last year.
And last year we went from twenty to twenty-two dollars for the base charge. And we discussed at some length that we were going to increase the base charge or the minimum charge again this year.
Yeah.
And the goal is to get it around a hundred dollars per year for for the minimum. Which is probably pretty average to a little bit on the low side compared to most communities.
And just a just a question, how many when I talk water and liquids, I I talk gallons. So how many gallons? And I think I've asked this question every year too. How many gallons are in a Cuban foot cubic foot?
Seven point four eight and a bunch of numbers afterwards. So about seven and a half.
All right.
Yeah, the average person uses a hundred and ten gallons a day, David. Maynard, for some reason, we have had a very healthy success rate for conservation. And our residents typically use sixty-five gallons per person a day. So Jeff, just to kind of piggyback off, that's actually why we focused on a zero percent increase of the five hundred use. So really, the majority of our low-income or elderly are only seeing that base fee jump. More, I would say almost sixty to seventy percent of our users are in the tw- twenty-five hundred cubic feet range. Our five hundred foot is actually declining. So our users that use five hundred or less are actually declining. I think our stats are somewhere in the fifteen percent range at this point. So I think that's due to a lot of changeover in the community. There's a lot of movement, people moving out of Maynard, people moving in, younger families coming in. Seniors retiring, moving out. But we did try to focus on making sure that we spread the wealth accordingly, which is the base charge. So every customer sees that no matter what. But also we always have in the back of our mind is to try to minimize the impact to our senior population or our population that might not be able to afford the use of water and use extreme conservation measures. It's very hard to be a five hundred cubic foot user or less, very hard. You might take one or two showers a week. You might do laundry every two weeks. You know, it's very hard to get into that level.
Yeah, and you're a small, you, you don't, you're a small community. You don't have a lot of services to spread this amount over. So it's going to re, you know, because you're a smaller community, you're going to have higher base costs because you just don't have the customer base to spread this out over.
Or the water producing ability, Jeff. So part of this too is one of those, if we had a capa- not a capacity issue where we actually want to sell water, we would look at the tiered system a little different. We'd be, we'd be trying to invite youths to kind of strengthen the enterprise fund, but we don't have that. And we don't have a large commercial base, kind of like the taxes in town. You know, your tax rate is a lot of residential tax and a very small commercial tax. The same thing applies to the enterprise fund. If we had big manufacturer users or commercial users, they can help offset some of those rates. But unfortunately we don't. Grocery stores, even what was, what was built in Maynard Crossing. The commercial there is not high producers, the housing is. So you know, the residential areas I mean, and crossing are really significantly draining our capacity as we speak. That, you know, take that hundred and ten average gallons per person and you know, spread out the population of those, the occupancy permits there. And hopefully they can get on par with our, with our Maynard sixty five, but still that's a significant increase to our water use. And we should hopefully see that help offset. That's actually why the rates before you are lower than they were last year. Is that percentage increase of projected use for main crossing should help that. But there's a lot of young families moving in, so the five hundred is, is dwindling.
And also the base or the minimum charge, that's guaranteed revenue, which is very important to an enterprise fund. The base or minimum charge only brings in about eighteen percent of your total revenue. Roughly four hundred and say twenty five thousand dollars is what the base charge, minimum charge generates. So relatively small portion of the two point, almost two point three million dollars you need to operate the system.
Right, but it's still an active choice to get that out of the base rate rather than the top producers. And I, I mean, everything you're saying makes sense, but I don't know if it, the, the rates are simply here by the data in front of me getting less progressive than they were before. And the fact that you're not charging an increase for the zero to five hundred is, is not reversing. It's just mitigating the increase in the base rate. So I, I see your point, Justin, but I, I still feel that it doesn't make sense to me to move in a less progressive direction for these rates. Notwithstanding the fact that we want to keep the same total amount coming in. Two questions, when you're, you mentioned we're comparing to other communities and that, you know, other communities, you know, every time I seem to ask the question, how are we comparing? I always get that it's impossible to compare. We can't compare. We're a unique community or different. But now all of a sudden, when we're comparing, we're comparing to communities. So how many are we looking at? Who are we comparing to? How are we making that decision? When you say we are charging a lower base rate to different communities?
Well, the base, based on, sorry, based on my experience with my other clients. You know, on the low end, most are in the hundred dollar range, on the high end, double that or even triple that in some cases.
A hundred dollar for the base rate?
Per, per year. Yes, that's it. That's annual, that's annualized.
And so we're just getting to a hundred here?
Yes.
Just to kind of piggyback off Doug, the, the comparisons, you're one hundred percent correct in ninety eight percent of it, except for the base rate. The base rate is a guaranteed budget item. So we know what X customers are and the base is equivalent to that. So we can set the budget to the recurring costs that have nothing to do with producing or not producing water. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I mean, you, if you come in a little high or low, you come back next year because we're doing this every year and you adjust up or down from there. That just makes it, hopefully you're not getting so much variability that it makes a huge difference if you're charging the upper rates as opposed to the base. I'll ask one more question. Our highest user, how many cubic feet are they going through? Where on this chart do they fall?
Oh, our hi- the highest average, the average user is the highest.
Highest user in town, how much are they?
Our, our highest users are probably forty five to five thousand. At one point when the brewery is, when the brewery, excuse me, when the brewery was in operations, they could peak at seven thousand. But that's very rare.
Water restrictions is what I'm really asking.
Yeah, our water restrictions really inhibit that. Our water conservation efforts really decrease that. It's, it's kind of that chicken or the egg situation. DEP wants conservation because of, of the way that we produce water and our groundwater sources and just the state all along. And then you can't make money to offset it. So you know, I think David says it every year, this is one of those ones where you want to see revenue, but we're kind of at the, the, the situation where we don't want to burn out our wells. So it's a, it's a balance every year. We don't have a ton of high users.
Yeah, I'm trying to access the, the build consumption right now.
I'm, I'm good. I've made my preferences. No, thank you.
Okay. Kingswood Realty Trust is one of your larger users. Eighty five Main Street, it's an apartment building. They use oh, on a, a high of forty thousand cubic feet a quarter to a low of maybe thirty, somewhere in that ballpark. So you have some, you have a few big users, but not, not a tremendous amount.
I think they have a single meter.
Yes.
They split it themselves. So that's why we don't consider them as forty thousand. So some of the issues we have in town, Jeff, is we have like Maynard condoizes. So we take these old buildings and they just keep condoizing and then they never switch over the meter systems. So some of the buildings have one meter reading for five condos, which that breaks our regulations, but they're already grandfathered in where we can't catch them. So sometimes they're forty thousand, but it's split between twenty units. So that's still, you do the math. I think this board has seen some people actually in the past have complained about this on Florida court. Does it sound familiar?
Yeah.
So this is, it's actually very common. It's something that we deal with. I want to tell you, almost every month we get new condo, new condo buyers come in and don't know where their water rates are, why they're getting, why they're hitting the high because the condo decided to have one meter and instead of investing and they hit the high every, they, they're counting for four families, four different units in one. So they hit our high tier and then they decide to split it themselves. We tell them all the time that all they have to do is put four separate meters in. That's what they're supposed to do by the regulations. But we don't necessarily have the authority to make them unless it's a new changeover. So it's kind of a problem we have.
The residents in that case, because they're now going to be at the higher rate, right?
Yeah, condos themselves are doing it to themselves.
Yeah, and, and that was one of the complaints from that couple from Florida.
Well, the argument that they had is that, you know, they're, they were, they were saying, and rightfully so, I think in, in, in many ways that people who can't afford homes that buy into an apartment complex versus the condo complex that are already struggling to try to make ends meet now are going to hit as a result of this, are going to get the higher rate. And in that particular instance, you'll recall they, somebody that was in the condo owned some type of a, like an industrial kitchen or something that they were making. They, they were making cookies or something along those lines and using all sorts of water, but it was getting spread out among five or six other.
The woman that owned the industrial kitchen was a woman that was complaining, number one. And number two, that particular building, if you remember, they, this, the person who was running the condo association
That's true too.
absconded with the cash.
They took off.
Never paid the bills. So they got, so they got whacked with a huge bill.
They had interest on it as well, as far as the.
But I think
She was the one running an illegal bakery out of her condo home. But they don't live there anymore anyway. So funny how the problem went away and no one else across the entire community has raised the issue since.
But and that, the, the issue also really makes it difficult to do what, what David and I have suggested, which is try to protect, you know, senior citizens, people who can't afford to pay as much. If they're, if, if those individuals are spread among the usage spectrum because they're living in places that are connected together in terms of the billing rate, then we really lack an ability to protect those payers if they exist at different parts of that spectrum, which makes kind of the entire proceeding argument a bit of a wash. Do we know what percentage of say, it, it would be nice to know if, 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 you know, the, the pairs that we're trying to protect are lumped in towards the lower end or if they're more evenly spread throughout the distribution. And I'm not sure if we have access to that knowledge.
No, Jeff, I would just tell you, a lot of the condoization goes on without the town knowing it, meaning ourselves. And then we don't have control to mandate the change unless it goes through a development process. We always, when we get complaints from a condo association, we always encourage them to invest and split the money if they take it. But it's not something we can force. They have to do it amongst themselves. We do try to encourage them. We, we refer back to our tiered system that they will actually save the money and recoup it over the course of a year, two years. But the condo associations in town, they tend to be like three or four condo apartments in these, in the, what, what were multifamily homes. So they're not very strong and they don't have a capital reserve to kind of pay a plumber to do this process. So they kind of just wing it. And there's not much we can do within our authority to help them besides just encourage them to try to invest upfront so that they see the long term savings.
All right, thank you.
Justin, just a quick question about, about that. As far as apartment buildings as opposed to condos, are apartment buildings typically single meter? Or are they all in one big tier?
Yes, mass general law. So if you're the owner and you have five apartments, Justine St. John would be the one responsible for the water. And your tenants don't pay water. I mean, it could be washed into your rent depending on how you are as a landlord. But due to national laws, the owner of the dwelling. So this is what happens is we'll say you had a four or five family and then you just sold off the apartments as condos. We're not told of that. Then all of a sudden, all these people come in and they say, hey, you know, we live at thirteen Elm Court and we now have a condo that we weren't aware of and there's a single meter. And now they're trying to split up the cost. So this is the conversation that we, that you kind of just heard is we encourage them to change over. But this stuff has happened, a lot of it has happened in the past and we're just kind of stuck with it. Some have started to make that change. When we implemented our meter changeover several years ago, we, we made sure that all condos do not have the ability. So any development that is going to potentially have condos, they have to have single meters per, per dwelling. There's no, that's what the rules and regs say now. But going backwards, we don't have the authority. We can only kind of help or lead them to that water.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, and we can go back to discuss anything with water at the end. So let's jump to the sewer rates for fiscal twenty two. And again, the slide looks a lot like the one from water. Few changes though, again, capital reserves, increase the fund balance, strengthen the enterprise. The rates will also fund the, bringing the personnel standards up to DEP minimum standards. And then there's a new line item in the budget for capital to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's a twenty thousand dollar line item. That's, that's new. Transfer from reserves. This is what we're, we're trying to get to with, with water. Because we have a balance of about one point two million in the wastewater reserves, we can, we can use some of that money to fund a one time purchase that we won't have to go out and borrow money for. And we're recommending in the budget and the rates are adequate. And the reserves are adequate enough that we can fund a half a million dollars for the vacuum truck. This is what we're trying to do with water. We're trying to get the fund balance up to the point where we can use this to pay for one time projects. So that five hundred thousand dollar vacuum truck, if you had to go out and bond that, it may cost you six hundred and fifty thousand, but because the money is sitting in reserves, we can use that, purchase the truck out of the reserves, ultimately saving the, the ratepayers, you know, somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand plus or minus, whatever that amount would actually work out to be. But the, the point and the principle is the money's there, let's take it for lack of a better term, the savings account, the reserve account, and use it for a one time purchase so that we don't have to incur additional costs. And again, the, the consumption is trending higher, just like in water. So any increase will go into the reserves and ultimately pay for future capital, like we're doing with the, the vacuum truck. So if we go to the next slide, please. Again, this is the pie chart for the fiscal twenty two budget for, for water. And the breakdown is down below. It shows the comparison between fiscal twenty one and fiscal twenty two. Overall increase of about a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. Increase to salaries, increase to purchase services, slight decrease in debt service. The capital improvements for the wastewater treatment plant or facility is a new line item. So there's an increase there. And then this is slight increase to the capital reserves. So it just gives you a little more information of what's changed since last year. So if we go to the next slide, please. The fiscal twenty two sewer rates. Presently, your minimum charge, your base charge is at fifty dollars. We're recommending that that number not change. And again, this is quarterly. With wastewater or sewer, we have a three step rate, not a four step rate. So the first five hundred cubic feet presently is at five dollars and seventy eight cents per one hundred cubic feet. We're recommending an increase of about seventeen cents per one hundred cubic feet to five dollars and ninety five cents, which is slightly under three percent. We're recommending that the second step, which is for all consumption between five hundred and one cubic feet and twenty five hundred cubic feet, increased by thirty three cents per one hundred cubic feet from the present of eleven thirteen to eleven dollars and forty six cents. Again, about a three percent increase. And then any consumption in excess of the twenty five hundred cubic feet per quarter would increase by forty one cents per one hundred cubic feet from the present amount of thirteen dollars and sixty five cents to fourteen dollars and six cents. Again, a three percent increase. And you do have some out of town customers. And again, we're recommending the same increase percentages of those customers as well. If we go to the next slide, this will just show the impact analysis of how these proposed rates will affect the current customers, the before and after. So again, the low user, someone who uses around five hundred cubic feet, they would see an eighty five cent increase per quarter in their bill from seventy eight dollars and ninety cents at the present level to seventy nine dollars and seventy five cents. That's about a one percent increase. And again, the percentage is lower because there's no increase to the minimum. Basically the opposite of what's happening with water. The average user, someone who uses the twenty five hundred cubic feet per quarter, presently they pay three hundred and one dollar and fifty cents per quarter. Their bill would increase by seven dollars and forty five cents per quarter to three hundred and eight dollars and ninety five cents, which is about a two and a half percent increase.
So Jeff, this is how we made up the minimum change from water. We tried to make it up on the sewer aspect. Ninety something percent of our Ninety-something percent of our customers have water and sewer. So the impact to our lowest users over the course of a quarter is $3.85. Pretty much a cup of coffee over the course of three months from Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, moving on. Okay, any questions on that? Or we can move to the next slide? So this slide, I think, gives you a pretty good idea of how the average residential customer, someone who uses 2,500 cubic feet of water, who has both water and sewer, how their bill will be affected. So if we start at the top right, say one o'clock, 2,500 cubic feet quarterly is consumed. We get down to about three o'clock. That presently, they pay $488.75. Slide around down to about six o'clock, their proposed bill under the rates that we've shown you tonight would increase to $504.10 up to nine o'clock. That's an increase of $15.35 per quarter, about $5 per month. It's an overall combined increase of 3.14%. It's about a 3% increase for someone who uses around 2,500 cubic feet per quarter. That works out to be a yearly average of about $61.40. Everything I've shown you in the previous slide, slides, this is what it all works out to be. Someone who uses 2,500 cubic feet, they're looking at about a 60, 61, $62 increase for these new rates. If we go the next slide, please. So in conclusion, we need to continue the good work that we've been doing over the last few years. You've made some tough decisions last few times that I've met with you. And the decisions you've made have been difficult and they've resulted in some, you know, fairly significant rate increases. But the overall fund health, that is, the enterprise funds, the health of the enterprise funds is so much better today than it was when we started two or three years ago. So these decisions are are working. They're tough decisions. Nobody likes to raise rates, but unfortunately, costs keep increasing. And in order to provide healthy, well, safe, drinkable water, it costs more and more each year. So we have to keep up with the the increase in costs. If we don't keep up with the increase in costs, we fall behind. Now, we know what the results will end up being. So continue the good work of the past few years. I'm proud of the decisions that you've made these last few years. They're working. And the funds are much healthier. Ultimately, that's going to result in lower increases to the rates as we move forward. And, you know, as I often hear, it's it's not a good time to raise rates. It's never a good time to raise rates. Unfortunately, it's something we have to do. And the fact is that it's expensive, it's less expensive to invest in the infrastructure today than it will be tomorrow or next year or the year after. Each year, you delay investing in the infrastructure. The costs just increase by more and more. So the fact, another fact is that smaller yearly increases, and that's what we're recommending this year, result in lower rates in the long run. The days of raising rates every three to five years, those are over. Unfortunately, costs are escalating to the point where if you raise your rates every three years, you're going to be looking at at least double-digit increases each, every few years. So much smaller increases and people, people understand smaller increases. And you just got to keep that ball rolling in the right direction. Funding capital through a combination of rates, new debt and reserves ultimately results in lower rates in the long run. And again, not to beat the dead horse here, but we got to continue to build the reserves. So we can go back through any of the slides and address any questions and concerns you might have. Or can open it up to the floor, however you want to handle it is fine with me.
Justin, one of the recommendations you made from the email that Greg forwarded to us is that you're proposing joining the water and sewer enterprise together for budget, from a budgetary standpoint. And I reading that, you can see there's a lot of benefits and as opposed to so-called, you know, drawbacks.
Yeah, Armin, so part of the, kind of go back to the jet truck, that 500 reserve. The reason we're able to pay for that one-time capital is because the reserve is strong enough. And actually, the reflection of the 1.2 million doesn't reflect the $200,000 mitigation money we receive from Capital Group, which will actually go on next year's reserve fund. So right now, I would tell you without DOR actually certifying it, we're actually looking at $1.4 million in the sewer reserve. So that 500,000 is actually something that we're able to provide that one-time capital without deading it. Now, the combination of water and sewer combines to one reserve account, giving us more flexibility to focus on the need and try to offset that debt peak that you saw on the the slide that we stopped on for a long period of time. What we would ultimately want to get to is the debt falloff and the debt add-on stay on a consistent level so that we don't have those peaks. We should hopefully strive so that our debt falloff and our debt, our incoming debt kind of stay level so that our debt pie ratio doesn't continue to increase. Unfortunately, we have to do that at first because we have a physical water capacity issue. But for financial issues, we should stay focused in our policies to try to get to a point where we don't have large peaks and value, excuse me, peaks and values, valleys regarding our debt service. So the reserve fund and the combination of that will help kind of offset that and get us in the right path.
And the and the other thing, because I I think this was already mentioned, you know, the infrastructure. And if we don't do any kind of improvement in infrastructure with all the development that will be proposed, you know, the, you know, powder mill corridor and all the other stuff, you you're looking at how is this, you know, the Beijing Royal School. That's going to open. So you you need to anticipate them, be proactive in order for us to, you know, be prepared for that, that that, you know, new development that's going to take place. Because otherwise, it it's going to fail. And and then what? And and so I think this is, for my, for my, you know, perspective, I think that's the right way to do this. We're doing it in a very small, you know, bite pieces. That's the way to get there.
Yeah, Armin, just to kind of piggyback off the corridor, if we, well, foray is really only going to account for main crossing. So even though we're putting that online, that's not necessarily increasing our capacity. That's just, that's keeping up with the Joneses.
Right.
Old Marlboro Road is the potential to increase our capacity to give us wiggle room for growth. So we're kind of stymying that growth and and it might seem like we're still kind of making progress, which we are. We should be proud of that. Just remember that even getting foray online is really gonna offset maiden crossing. And I would tell you that just our rough numbers, we haven't finalized our our 2020 water quality report with our average numbers yet. But just some rough numbers, I think we produced 2 million gallons more this year than our normal baseline. Part of that was COVID, but part of that is maiden crossing. Until I get a fine line with maiden crossing without this extraordinary, extraordinary COVID and that baseline, then we, that's most like an accountability of well forays capacity. So really, this is something that, you know, well foray is right, right, is very close. But really, we're still not increasing. We're just keeping up.
I also think it's important to remember when we talk in terms of infrastructure, that I think that when we talk, we have these conversations a few, you know, last year. You know, one of the things that kept going through your head when you're talking about infrastructure is I think of pipes, you know, the pipes underneath the ground. And you don't think of the fact that the the actual treatment plants or the wells is the infrastructure that at this point we're talking about more often than not. So this is the more expensive infrastructure that we now need to invest in because, because of everything that you've said tonight. But, you know, when you first talk about it, if you instantly think of pipes, you think, well, it can't be that expensive. But it, we're not talking about pipes. We're talking about major pieces of equipment.
Yeah, they're they're both, Justin. We actually, old Marlboro, the well sources are from the seventies. Brockland and and well four are from the late eighties, early nineties. So you start to do the math on that. These these well sources are getting over 50 years old. So we need to invest. They're well beyond their lifespan.
And that doesn't even count the underground piping that we're talking about. So hence the water main breaks, you know.
I I've got a quick, it's more of an observation for when this is presented for the final presentation on the second. And I don't know if, Justin, if you're going to be, this memorandum that you sent to us is going to be part of the, well, it's part of the public record, but I think there might be a typo on the second page. I don't know if you have it in front of you, where you do, you did the financial impact and I think the math is wrong. It says, it says the per month charge for 15 cent or 15 cent of fees, cubic feet of use is 678, but then the per per quarter, which should be four times that is not. And then the per year is not 12 times that number. So I, and that's true for all, all three of the categories. So I think the math is wrong.
Yeah, let me double check that and I'll address the memo accordingly tomorrow as well.
Going back to our earlier conversation, I wonder if it makes sense to do, you know, your second to last slide, you have the combined water and sewer for the average customer. I wonder if it makes sense to the impact analyses that we were discussing so much the same way. Because I think that last thing you said, Justin, about the sewer rates being structured the way we are makes up for the way you're increasing the water rates. And I think that helps for me mitigate a lot of the concerns that I had earlier in that conversation. So I understand why we, we need to see the rate structures independently, but for that impact analysis, it's for 97% of customers is going to be combined. So would it?
I'll provide you with a combined impact analysis.
That's actually what my memo provides, which David is not, I'm looking at it now. So the numbers aren't jiving. So I'll address those, but that I typically look at it as a whole. So that's what my memo looks at is that 1,500 range, 2,000 range, 25 of combination of sewer and water. But we like to present the water and sewer to the board. So you understand why one is a little higher, why we're aiming in this direction for this particular enterprise versus the other. But uh, but most likely next year, if we have approval to combine the rates, it will be one and the same anyways. So.
Well, then it'll be a moot point at that point anyway. Justin, how have conversations been going at a high level with the DEP since last year's unfortunate call?
Very well. So as you may know, last year, after our rate approvals, budget approvals, et cetera, we were able to onboard the water and sewer superintendent. And then we were able to backfeed the treatment plant operator who replaced, who actually went into the water and sewer superintendent position. I informed, so the typical water and sewer superintendent position is a high-level management admin. But the person who actually went in, our internal candidate, has all the licenses. So we described the DEP in a large conversation that even though he was assuming that position, he was going to carry on some of the admin role, that I was still going to take the burden of so that he can help offset the operational situations with the treatment plants to kind of mitigate what the need is from DEP's mineral standards. But if you look at our flow chart, what we have right now currently is a water superintendent. We have our water and sewer foreman. We have two operators, our water treatment operators, one sewer mechanic and one water mechanic. We need three water and sewer treatment operators. Currently, two of our managers are actually filling those roles. So we're kind of hurting ourselves and then I have to backfill down. So if you look at it that way, I'm just doing a lot more of the day-to-day DEP stuff. Our water superintendent's backfilling an operation load and and down. So this proposal includes that last treatment plant operator to meet our minimum treatment plant requirements. Right now, we still don't meet our distribution and collection requirements, but the the statute is much more specific with more teeth regarding the treatment plant operators and the need for those. So the sewer O and M's that DEP are developing, which sets the minimum standards for the collection, which is kind of the street, the piping in the street, minimum requirements is still in development. They have rough numbers. We know what they're aiming for. They're pretty close to getting there, but those haven't become strong statutes. The treatment plant operators are strong statutes. So this rate includes that last treatment plant operator, which will fill out our minimum standard for water processes. We can slowly work on in the future the collection system and distribution. And when you hear me say collection system, that's the sewer pipes and the distribution system is the water pipes. So each, each category actually falls in a different criteria within DEP. So they have standards for distribution piping and standards for collection system, standards for wastewater treatment facilities and standards for water treatment facilities. So we have four different processes that the utility handles. And right now, you know that we sub out Veolia, so we meet our wastewater treatment standards based off that contract. And we're filling out our water treatment processes minimum standards, but we're still behind on the others. But they're not as much of a concern. We might even piggyback next year where we do not add a body to the rates because we need to concentrate on Old Marlboro Road. Or if we have to push Old Marlboro, then that's when we secure that that minimum staffing. But we've made significant headway. Honestly, part of the thing with DEP is DEP barks right away. They really want to see results, but they really want to see that commissions get it and start to make investments. They can't 100, they can find you, but they can't demand that you do things. They can find you and that's the demand. They really just want to see that there's a plan, just like DOR when it comes to revenue sources, that you have a plan, you're trying to execute it and you're working towards it. So far in the past, last year, we did that. And this year, it looks like the plan is continuing to go on pace. And they are also concerned with our water capacity. So they know that we're struggling with both. They want to see a path both ways that kind of work in the method that we're doing right now.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions for either Doug or Justin for tonight? Like I said, we'll revisit this again on the, during the public hearing on in February.
Thanks, guys.
I do want to just give you guys an update while I have you now. If you've got five more minutes. I wanted to get it on the TA report, but I was on vacation last week. So I didn't get it on the the TA report. But just a quick update while we're on water and sewer. So we, we submitted the final order of completion for well foray, which is the final step of acquiring our permit to allow for the pumping of that well source. So cross our fingers, hopefully, we're hoping to hear within the next month or so that we have approval, which gets on our our water withdrawal process. And then we can start the procurement because we already have the ability to borrow for 1.5 million for well foray, which is the drilling of the well, the piping system to the treatment plant. So we're hoping to get that approval. And once we get that approval, we're going to start the process right away and kind of piggyback into the summer. So we might be building a fire station and putting well foray and treatment plant for processes all in the same timeframe. And then number two, Jeff posed a nice question the other day. I I know I haven't given an update on White's Pond, but White's Pond has kind of been in hiatus. DEP is handling this a lot behind the scenes. Just regarding the PFAS situation in White's Pond. We, DEP has ordered the Fire Academy to continue to do testing for migration. They have confirmed PFAS on the property behind the fire department, excuse me, the Fire Academy. So they also have confirmed that we have high levels of PFAS from White's Pond, but they have not confirmed that it is necessarily from the Fire Academy or the plating company around or naturally from the environment. You can get PFAS from environmental impacts as well. So the next step, what DEP required the Fire Academy to do was go outside their zone to try to pinpoint mitigation. And they do drilling bore holes like tiny little wells everywhere to try to see if there's mitigation and movement outside of the contaminated area. We're in that process. But the state has recognized that PFAS is within all, if not a majority of public drinking water systems at rates fluctuating from what are acceptable levels to now what are not acceptable levels throughout the state. And because of that, they have provided grant funding for testing and piloting processes to determine how to remove PFAS. To determine how to remove PFAS. Um, we applied to round one last fall and we did not, we were not awarded. But we were not awarded on the basis that White's Pond is not an active source and D P knows that. So we have a permit, they know what our permit is for White's Pond, they also know it's not an active source cuz we'd have to identify it in our records. Uh, but they do know it's a secondary source, so they opened up, we had some communication. Um, literally every single one of the, the phase one awards went to immediate impacts. Like Hudson had it in their, their actual well source that they were throwing water into and other communities as well. So a lot of those communities were the recipient in the first round. The second round does focus on potential secondary sources, which is should, we should be very advantageous for this. Um, the max amount for the award is two hundred K though. For us to conduct piloting at White's Pond, our rough estimate costs are about two hundred and fifty. So we went for the moon, two hundred K, uh, the state knows that White's Pond is higher in our uh long-term water capacity uh agenda. So we're hoping to acquire the two hundred K and we'll make up the other fifty K. This is where the reserve funds come into play. So if we had to, if we were awarded a grant that doesn't necessarily fully fund our operation. We can overspend a capital line and hit our reserve funds without going to the general obligation. And we can still conduct things accordingly fast in a fluid dynamic situation. So that's why you hear Doug say the, the stronger our reserve funds are, the more flexibility we have as a utility to keep moving. And actually getting rewards and making sure there's tangible results with that. I'd hate to pass up a grant because we can't come up with the final ten percent the, of our share, does that make sense?
No, yeah.
So that was my update, I'll try to put it in next T A report as well.
Excellent, thank you, Justin. Uh, all right, then um, hearing nothing else, uh, again, thank you, Doug, thank you, Justin. And uh Doug, will you be joining us in February too?
Oh yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, all right, just wanna make sure. All right, sounds great, thank you very much.
We'll see you next month, thank you.
All right, uh, item number thirteen would be the uh budget development, so Greg.
That's right, so we're still deep into budget season right now and I have my, my instructor for full-time. Uh, three days, so I, I wanted, I wanted to share, of course, where I am with the budget, but also um. We're now in the crunch time and I, and I'll, and I'll get into it in a minute, so I provided the board with two documents. Um, one is where we are with our revision, we're revision six of the um financial plan or the financial model, basically with the town budget. Uh, but I wanted also highlight the notes that I provided to the board and it kind of tells the story where I'm getting to. And I'm not gonna go down every line, but the, the introduction is the same. We, we still have, we're still in the red, so we're in the red right now at about six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, as we're comparing our revenue versus our expenses, right? And of those expenses does include the town, the schools, it's the biggest uh department. So they're gonna have the biggest budget request and their budget request was one point eight million dollars um for F Y twenty-two. So that's six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars that I, that I have to make up. Is com, is comprised of the town departments and the school department, but as well as some other, the assumptions. That I listed above in this, in the notes, the di, the document I'm reading off of is the notes that I included in the board ducks. And those assumptions include charter assessments, asset vocational assessment. Now, on a, on a side note, um, Mike and I did, Mike Azza and I did meet with asset vocational uh superintendent's office the other day. And that's not gonna be as high as eight percent, so it, it might be between three and a half to four percent, so that. Or, or even lower, they're not sure, but they gave a con- conservative, so that could be about forty thousand dollars. It's not a huge amount of money, but it's forty thousand dollars that, so that's six eighty-two is maybe six forty-two. So that it's, it's not, it's not a massive amount, but it's money that, that can go um towards our needs. Um, but as, as you can see, like our liability insurance is high, our health insurance increases, not. Not so, so high, like we originally budgeted nine percent and that's only five percent increase and that might come down. We don't, I won't know our health insurance premium um until late January, February. Um, they're not, they're not entirely sure whether all that information is gonna be released, usually it happens when the M M A annual conferences. So, well, I'll, I'll keep the board informed. Um, and also, I don't know what the state budget is, so we just, we just got our F Y twenty-one state budget, I won't know what our F Y twenty-two state budget is for a while. Okay, so that's, that's where we were, um, and now, now I, I do wanna, this is where we are in the budget. To get that number to six, that from six eighty-two to zero, uh, we have to make some decisions. And, and my job is to provide the board a recommended budget and then the budget, well, the board will then accept that recommendation. Make revisions to it, can do whatever you want, and I will provide recommendations as to adjustments to be made. Eventually to then be proposed to town meeting for appropriation, so. I, I, I do think that, and I feel like coming off of the water sewer rates, I think you're, you're gonna hear a lot of the same stuff. We have not been funding a lot of items on the town department side. So uh whether it be M S four, which is uh stormwater management, tree services. Um, capital items and that capital, that capital, the, the poor capital line item um has not, we have not been funding that. And so now we have a capital planning committee and I'm not giving them very much funds to play with. Um, and snow and ice, so snow and ice has always been a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and every year we're just reliant on free cash. Um, and then also the deputy fire chief, so I, I highlighted some items that I, that I, that we have not been funding. That have been in the budget request that I get from the town departments every year. And I'm sure they had been submitting it to my predecessors for multiple years. And I'm not, and I don't know, I don't, I can't speak for every other year, but I, I really want the board to take seriously consideration to start funding some of these items. These are items that we, that we pay for, besides I, besides the deputy fire chief, those other items is what we pay for every year anyways. And every year we're reliant on budget transfers and free cash. Um, and that's not good budgeting and I, and I don't, I don't mean to, cuz I, I made those same decisions years before. So I'm not trying to point the finger at anybody in particular, I'm just saying that, that these, I would like to steer us away from those sort of. That budget direction where we just been reliant on, on, I don't know, like uh, uh, you know. Expenses, you know, kind of going in our favor, but it's just the, the proper way to budget is you budget ahead of time for these expenses that you know you're gonna have to make. And that, as far as the deputy fire chief, the, our fire chief does have a strong argument, I, I might, the point of this um presentation tonight. Is not to get into the justification for the deputy fire chief. Um, I do believe it is justified and I can provide that materials later, but I, as far as tonight, I'm just updating the board as to where we are with the budget development. Um, but if I were to propose those items, so you can see um. In addition to no, making no cuts to the town departments in F Y twenty-one and incorporating the contracts that I have. And there's a number of union negotiations and personal agreements uh and then other contractual, like smaller, but contractual obligations I have to make. And then those budget recommendations that I believe we should start paying for, um, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand and five hundred dollars. So really that's six eighty-two, five oh nine that were in the red, I'm, I'm proposing that it would go up, which I know doesn't make any sense. And where would that money come from? Well, it's gonna come from our, the biggest piece of that pie, which is the school department. And I, and I know there's members of the school committee on right now and I, they're not, they're probably not liking anything I'm saying. Um, eventually though, I would have to take from that school department request. I, I, I just wanna be able to pay for one point eight million dollars, we don't, we don't, we don't make that much in our, in our revenue as is. Um, but what I'm proposing is that the, the majority of these items. Actually, I would argue that all of these items that I'm, that I'm requesting fund everybody in town, like they, they are services. And I'm not saying uh that schools doesn't service everyone in town, I believe it does. So what I'm proposing is the same, like these are the, um, the town departments are not meant to be selfish, they're trying to provide the services to the town. And so. I think you guys understand the point I'm trying to make, I, my proposal right now is to reduce the, the proposed increase in the school departments. Um, and I know they're not gonna be happy to hear that, uh, especially after the cuts that we made to them as far as, as well as to the town back in October. Um, but that's where we are, so this isn't finalized yet, there's another bunch of subcommittee meeting next week. Where I, I plan on saying the same thing with slightly, slightly updated numbers. Um, and, and I will continue to update the board, I just wanted to give the board uh, uh, an update of where we were and get feedback from the board. So if you tell me I'm crazy and not to do any of this, then I won't.
Greg, I, I, I just wanna make sure I understand, is your proposal right now to include in the budget? Sixty-two five for a deputy chief, deputy fire chief?
No.
It is, that's my.
It is, yeah, that's exactly what it is.
I don't know who said no, but yes, I am proposing to fund a deputy fire chief.
So. My back of the envelope calculation here, if we were to take that eight thirty-one out of the school budget, the school budget would still be going up at about five percent. And I know Natasha you're on the line and, and that's not quite true, given the um deficit to make up for, but. That is still higher, it looks to me than any individual line item on the town side, is that correct in terms of a raw percentage excluding the fire station?
That's correct. But I see it's, that is correct, but it's, it's a different beast, right? I'm not trying to.
Population, it's a very rough calculation, I admit.
That's right, that's right, but still like um, the departments are so, so unique, I.
Right, there's vast differences between them.
Yeah, the, the other thing that's important, um, I, I mentioned this to Greg uh yesterday is that. Um, I know that what got us and got me into trouble um last year when we were talking about budget um with this. Um, in reference to the schools and the town, that a lot of times when the schools are calculating their budget increase. They calculate from there, so they're calculating their percentage from before they got cut. I think.
That's true.
And we calculate from the cut, so it looks like we're giving them a, so if you look at it, it looks like we are giving them a bigger percentage. But if they're basing on the, on the June number, it's a smaller percentage, so it's the same number. But it's, it's a different percentage, so I just wanted to throw that out there too.
That's fair, and that's what I was referencing um when I, when I brought that same point up in, in the subcommittee meeting, so I, I acknowledge that fact.
Excellent. All right, uh, does anyone have any other comments or questions for uh Greg? Right now? Now, Greg, I know we have that, um, so we're not gonna meet again before you give us.
Yeah.
The budget, present the budget, right? Um, you have a, you have a budget subcommittee, do you have a budget subcommittee meeting before that?
Next, next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but uh, I mean, yes, like I will, I will provide justification for all these recommendations as I do. And then, and we'll, we'll show the numbers and, and I'll try to write a narrative to, to explain that better. Um, and then it'll be up to the board, so this is, I'm not, you know, there's, there's no understanding when I submit the budget by January twenty-first. That that's the budget, no, it's not, it is my recommendation to the selectmen and then the selectmen can deliberate amongst yourselves about what you wanna present to the town.
Okay. All right.
All right, so very good, I also tacked on my, my proposal for free cash, so if anything, um. Uh, the capital planning committee does get to deliberate on my proposed use of free cash. Um, there you are, and I think they meet tomorrow night, so if you're interested, you can hear about what they think about that.
Capital, okay.
So that's it, manager woman and um. Yep.
Sorry, I was rereading the uh, the memo, okay.
Okay, good.
All right, everyone good if we move on? All right. Uh, moving on to town meeting articles, with developing a list of draft articles.
Right, we just, so Becky and I just wanna keep the board abreast of what, of what the ongoing list. The majority of this is, as per usual, it's the, it's the same articles you see every year for the house moving up to town. Um, a couple of things I do wanna point out is, actually was already mentioned, one, uh, Justin is proposing um. Combining water and sewer enterprise, uh, but that, the timeline for that is not to say, you know, we do the town meeting the next day, it's combined, no. It's, this is looking for the authority to combine them and then we would have to go through, um. You know, it's not, it's not an overnight procedure to, to combine those two, besides which I, I will have a brand new finance team in the. What, for at least two-thirds of my, of the heads of my finance team will be new, and so I don't expect things to happen overnight.
Uh, Greg?
Mike?
Mike. Yeah, on that piece that combining, Doug, uh, Justin and I have talked about it, most town, most cities do it that way. There are very few towns and the advantage, and I mean, if I have to later on. Is I'm probably one of maybe five town captains or finance directors who actually know how to do it. So when the time comes, I will offer my assistance to whoever you hire as to how to do it, so.
I'd like to hear some thoughts on, and we don't have to get into this tonight because it's getting way too late. But uh relative to how rate setting goes when you have a combined, this, this no. There's no basis upon which to say why you are raising rates to a certain degree. And I know that there can be arguments back and forth and I'm sure that there are good arguments on both sides of that discussion. But that's where I'd be concerned, I, I think you go blind into rate setting, we don't have to have the discussion tonight, Justin, I just, just to set, sort of set the table on it. Um, that I, I'm concerned about how you're setting rates when you are uh, you, you have a combined. Um, you know, free cash, so to say, for, for uh, for whatever it is called uh. Uh, earnings, the retained earnings on water and sewer. It's just something for discussion when we get to the discussion on the topic.
Okay.
Good point. And then I would say the only other thing I wanted to highlight, maybe two things, I guess, is even though it says contract sterling golf. Um, that, the proposal is not to approve, it's um, well, I, the, the proposal is to approve a contract for a longer term. And then um. And then, uh, oh, and then the special legislation, so, so um. Art specialties is requesting a full uh package sort of licenses, so we would have to. So that's where we are, but you know, the, the departments and the committees will get us, they'll continue to get us more, you, you see there wasn't almost, I don't think there was any planning. So there, there's always um zoning gotta come through and what, we're, well, well, I'll continue to update the board as it comes.
Okay. Sounds good, anyone have any questions? All right.
It's already starting to look like a busy town meeting.
I know.
No, that, a lot of that is, is kind of procedural, but yeah, yes, it, all the town meetings are fun.
All right.
And then, uh, oh, I'm sorry, manager woman, go ahead.
No, that's it, next is for you, town, town administration report.
Right, so.
Pages.
Okay, I'm not gonna read them, so.
I get a headache reading it.
Well, I, how about before, I won't highlight that, I would just say, oh, no, go ahead, Armin.
No, I'm just saying, I do have to say, this was really um impressive, I mean, there was just so much material in there. And good stuff too, I mean, so, um, I mean, I highlight a lot of the areas and we're not gonna bring it up cuz we got so much going on tonight. But you did a great job putting the report.
It, it, it is actually quite a report.
Isn't it?
It is.
Very detailed in some instances, which is actually pretty good, you know, that keeps us, I, I, you know, it's great cuz um, we, we need to know what's going on and I think you. You gave us.
I think the nice thing is, is that I think the nice thing about it is, it's become a place where I think that um both. The police and fire chiefs and other department heads as well are looking forward to sharing their information in this report.
Yeah.
Because they know we're actually reading it and we comment about it and, you know, the information is being used.
Yeah.
I did see one thing, I don't know if it was just a delay in, in reporting, but there was uh, there was a report about a dog bite. Um, I forget what, what street it was on, but then, but, but then when the uh, when the, when the animal patrol officer gave her numbers. It said that there were no bites.
Yeah.
No, sorry.
I, I think that was the Pink Panther movie you're talking about, that Doug does not bite.
Let me tell you, I was reading, I was reading, um, I ended up reading something else, something and it ended up pushing me into the, the um. Town of Acton Police Report for one, one week in the past couple of weeks, they get the same crazy stuff as we do. So I don't feel so bad, dog bites and a woman walked into the police station and couldn't find her purse, it was in the seat next door. You know?
Yeah.
Crazy stuff, but.
No, no, I, I, for, things are relatively quiet nowadays, I mean, that's, that's, that's a good thing.
Well, not based on your report, it's not.
No, no, I mean, this is good news, I mean, but, I mean, like, sometimes a lot of stuff happens, but I mean, like, for the part, it's, things kinda die down around this time. Um, but um, that's a good point about, that's a good catch, Dave, um, yeah, there's probably in uh um discrepancies between the reports. Uh, and it, and because it's a lot of timing, so.
Uh, well, that's what I figured, but yeah, I just thought it was kind of strange because we hadn't seen that detail on, you know, from the animal control off. Patrol officer before and then right above it, we saw a report on a dog bite that we never see and then it was inconsistent.
No, it's a good point, so I, I do appreciate all the departments providing all the reports as we do and, and I also like to take advantage, of course. Uh, to put it right up front with this sort of like big things, which is, of course, COVID, so like, I think. So like, I think, I don't think I've changed actually the first paragraph in many, many, many months, because I always like to make sure people are going to the right. And and we are still updating our COVID page, um, every, every weekday. I don't know what our numbers are. I, I admit, I didn't look at our numbers today for Maynard, uh, but, but I do encourage the public to state all this information. Um, the other thing I want to highlight, and I do apologize for not including you into the report, and I didn't tell Justine in time uh, to have it as an item on the agenda, but you you can see in my public content notes, um, my response to the board's direction from the last meeting about the social media policies and the, and the code of ethics policies. So I'm, this isn't, this isn't a topic for discussion unless you want to just, unless you want to discuss it based on my, um, my reporting. I just want to provide you, this is the, this is the information that I collected. And so Justine and I, if this is up to you, we can, I can set this as a separate, you know, this can be a separate agenda. Um, to talk about these two policies, you can tell me to go away about it, whatever you want to do, but I wanted, I want to give you, this is the update I had about those topics.
Yeah, no, I think it's important to discuss. I think that, um, actually, if we can put it on the agenda for the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And that that way we'll take a look at it, we'll, we'll digest it a little bit. We have time to ask some questions and then come back ready to discuss it then.
Perfect.
And, um, I'm not kidding about the fact that I personally appreciate your report, Greg, because I think there's information in there that we're not aware of. So, you know, so reading a lot of the stuff, some of them, some of them are actually, you know, are very important to to read and, and be informed. So much appreciated.
It's a, it's a lot. I wish, I wish there was more pictures. I like it when the pictures come through.
You gotta wait for Megan to come back and give you.
Yeah. No, Justin takes a lot of good pictures. I give him credit, Justin. A lot of good pictures. So that's it, Manu Charon, although I do want to talk about the community development block grant. So, uh, as, as an update, and this isn't finalized yet, but as an update, um, uh, we do meet regularly with the five, five towns that are, that are all collaborating on this with Acton being the host community, but those five towns are uh, Maynard, Acton, Littleton, Boxborough and Westford. So we are, we have applied for, and we've been successful moving forward with the community development block grant that's COVID related um, to give funding for, uh, small businesses specifically defined as micro enterprises. So that's only five employees, including the owner. Um, and then we also, there's also an aspect for food pantries and, and then this is, this is a new, um, update childcare subsidies. So that the concept, and I wrote this in my notes, the concept is that we, that, you know, someone applies for the childcare subsidy and then we, we pay that childcare provider, right? So the money doesn't go to the family. It it has to go towards that service. But this is moving along. I I did include a, um, a draft intermeasable agreement, um, which I'm not asking the board to approve tonight. I, I'm, I need town council to just give me thumbs up on. But it was, it was drafted by town council in Acton and, and I believe some of the other towns have already approved it as well. Um, but when, when it is final, final and ready to be approved by the board, I'll have the board, uh, considered for approval. And now the timing of this, I'm not sure of, like, we, we are make, we, and again, I have to give a lot of credit to the host community, which is Acton, the town manager's office in Acton and their, um, and, and this gentleman named Selby, who I think is their land use management director. I can't remember his title. But he's basically in charge of planning, uh, for the town of Acton. They've, they've really taken the lead on a lot of this work. Um, they were able to procure a grant administrator. And, um, um, so, or no, we, we have not yet procured the grant administrator. I apologize. We, we, we procured the, um, uh, grant writer. So, so community development block grant is, it's no small task. And so it's, it's a lot for any staff to take on. So we were able to get a, a grant writer to help us do it. And, um, and, and so we've made a lot of progress for that. Um, but I don't know when the money is going to start coming. So once we, once we get them brought underway, it might be February, and I hope it is, because I'd love to get this money as soon as possible. But even then, once the money is available, it still is a requirement to be, you have to apply for it. So we'll go, we'll try to put the word out there as best we can about what's available and how to apply for it. And, hey, I just want to, I'm excited about it. I just want to update the board about it. It could be really good. It's not going to be a huge, you know, there's not a lot of businesses that might meet this criteria and they have to, and they have to, you know, they, they do have to prove, um, uh, their eligibility and that's not always easy. So, uh, but it is another, it's another venue that maybe we can get some, some support out to the community.
Great.
And I've ran out, I've ran out of saliva. So that's it. I guess that's all I can say.
Excellent, excellent. Um, I actually, other than saying, uh, happy new year to everyone and happy twenty twenty-one. Um, I actually don't have anything for the chair report tonight. So I'll move it a little. I know, Chris, you're shocked. I get it.
What?
Uh, but I will turn it over to, how about Jeff?
Sure. Um, a, a couple items. Um, Justin, while you're here, I noticed in the last, uh, the, the, the large snowstorm we had in December that afterwards there was a fair amount of ice accumulation on the sidewalks, Nason, Maine, right in the downtown high traffic areas that were, you know, passable, I think, for most people, but for senior residents, residents with disability, that provided quite a challenge. So I don't, I know your crew is stretched thin, but I don't know if there's anything that can be done to improve the ability for pedestrians to move through those particular areas, or if that one particular storm, that's the one where we had about eight inches, um, you know, was a particularly challenging one.
Um, sometimes, Jeff, just a, a quick heads up, um, de-icing material that we use, um, typically works better on, um, right away, traffic, uh, vehicular traffic right aways, because the vehicles actually grind in the salt and create the brine that actually transforms the layer to remove ice. Um, on walkways, if you have that thin layer, depending on the temperatures of the ground and the temperatures outside, sometimes that rock salt can't get activated because it's not getting pushed in to the situation. So if that ice build happened prior to, so when we plow it, sometimes our plows, because of our sidewalks are not in great shape, they kind of do one of these. So the cutting edges don't necessarily scrape the best. And if you have that layer, even though we apply rock salt, if there's not foot traffic or sun the next day, that thin layer becomes ice and it actually doesn't work the same way as you would see on a roadway. Asphalt is black, it radiates better than concrete, which is gray. So it's not uncommon to have, um, icing situations on sidewalks that linger for days, uh, past the storm. So we don't use sand anymore due to our MS four processes, which is what you used to see DPW's do in the past for traction. Um, so this is kind of one of those where I always encourage everybody to kind of chip in and take, you know, a little bit of burden on their, on their front of their storefronts. You know, they're selling a product, you want people to walk in. Just like, you know, any one of you as a resident would go out and shovel your sidewalk and kind of take care of it. We do apply material, but I would tell you the rock salt, even with magnesium treatment that we have on it, sometimes on the sidewalks just doesn't work as fast as you would like.
Okay, thank you. Um, two more items. Uh, Jack McKean is going to be stepping down as the chair of the EDC. And so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the, the large amount of work he's put into the, the formation and, and leadership of that body and the creative ideas that have come out of it and thank him publicly for that. Um, the last one, I've talked to a number of individuals who want to know what will happen in terms of, um, some of the outdoor seating venues that we've been, um, allowing through the pandemic and if those will continue afterwards, once the pandemic is over. And I think there's been a positive response that I've gotten from having some of those outdoor venues. So I just wanted to make sure at some point, and obviously we're still a bit of a ways to go before we're there, we have a discussion about, you know, whether it's valuable to continue those in some format, what format, what are the pros and cons? Um, and so I just wanted to, to pass along those comments and, and see what we can make of that. So, and those, those are it for me.
One comment on that, Jeff, and Greg would know better than I, but, um, there may be restrictions, especially on alcohol service. For, um, those were special guy, special allowances to, uh, that the governor gave to, or that the legislature gave to cities and towns to expand the footprint of certain liquor establishments. And it was only for pandemic time. So, uh, I think it would take more than just saying, let's keep doing it. I think there's going to have to be legislative or state approval, uh, even from the, the ABC because of the liquor aspect, but Greg would know better than I.
Well, at a minimum, we would have to change the, like, the, the footprint, like, on that license itself, we would have to change.
Right, right.
And so, but, and to what you're pointing to, Dave, I think is correct. Like, I'm not sure to what level of authority we would have to get to, to approve that footprint. Uh, I'm saying footprint, but that's not the right term. It's the.
Right, yeah, yeah.
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 Uh, but I think it's a great point.
Yeah.
And, and that's something I look forward to. I very much look forward to having Megan Zmudo back to answer all these questions more thoroughly. And, um, but, but I, I have a couple of months, uh, and, uh, and there's not a lot outdoor happening nowadays anyways. Um, but it's a good point, and I do want to be prepared for that conversation come this.
Yeah, and that's, and that's right. It is. I mean, planting a seed and thinking about this ahead of time, because it's Jeff's point. I, a lot of these restaurants are going to want to, you know, take advantage of that again. But I don't, again, you, you're making a good point. Dave is making a good point. We don't know exactly how, how this is going to turn out.
I think, I think we'll be okay in the spring because I think we're still going to be in this, in this.
He may, yeah.
In the state of emergency per se, but it's, it's, I, I, I think Jeff's talking long term.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be a bigger discussion.
We should look at something long term.
No, I don't disagree. I just think that it's not as simple as saying, let's keep doing it because it was put in there as a part of the state of emergency.
But what came out of this, I think was, it, it, it's, it shows that it is something that's probably not only from, uh, from a, uh, um, experience standpoint, if you go downtown and you see all those, especially, you know, when PC set up his, uh, there was probably one of the better ones. It, it is nice to see that and it's great for tourism too. I mean, attracting people from, you know, other, other towns. Uh, so.
So I, we, and to David's point about the, the, the state restrictions, we, we, we're not the only community, I think, that's going to favor this sort of thing. But I think because of our, the increased number of restaurants we have, we might be disproportionately to benefit from that. So it may be, you know, worth letting, you know, Representative Hogan and Senator Eldridge know that, you know, we, you know, if, if everybody in town is on board with this, that, you know, we would strongly favor that change. Because I'm sure there are other legislators who are going to be contacted and, and let know, um, that they want to see this outdoor seating more accessible across the state.
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking at and seeing the, the pros and cons of it all and, um, and, and figuring out what, what it would take to get it done. So thanks for bringing it up.
Yes.
We can put it on our radar. Do you need anything? Uh, you have anything else, Jeff?
Nope, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, Armand.
Um, just to piggyback on Jeff's mention on, uh, Jack McKean, I, I already reached out to you, Justine, and I think we should have some kind of formal recognition. Um, maybe a town meeting or something, but he had, he has done a fabulous job. I mean, he was a great leader. Um, he had a, you know, fantastic way. I mean, I was closely working with him and staying in touch with him and all, at all times. And, um, he, uh, he's going to be, you know, tough to, uh, to talk from a standpoint of shoes to fill. He's going to be a tough, uh, tough to fill because he did a fantastic job. He was a, um, steady person, passionate about he did, caring what he did, did and smart. And I think he did a great job. So, uh, he'll be missed, but, you know, we have to move on and find someone else now. And I, for now, is I'm not sure, Greg, um, is Dick going to be taking the helm for a while? Is that what's going on?
He's the interim chair, but, um, because I believe he was the vice, but.
Have you, have you, have you looked at other possibilities?
Uh, so yes and no. I mean, like, I, I tried to let the, like any other body.
Let them, you know, pick their own chair.
Yeah, who's going to be there, but like, um.
Because Roz is probably Roz could be a, a person again to look at. I mean, that's just me.
Right. I don't want to get in, in, into too much. I mean, like, it's, it's true that there's a couple of people that stand out.
Yeah. But anyway, but yeah.
That's true. If you get the next EDC meeting, I think it's, I think it's, uh.
Thursday, next Thursday.
It's next Thursday, and I think it's on the agenda. I believe I saw it on the agenda. It's that, uh, like any board reorganization every year.
Anyway, but thank you, Jeff, for bringing it up because he's, he's just, um, he's, he was fantastic.
Anything else?
Nope, no, good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, how about David?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Justin, since you're here, um, can you tell us a little bit about the first week of recycling on the Christmas trees? So other than the, the whole issue that went into where people are still dropping them, but how did the program go? Um, how was it received? How are the guys treated? Um, uh, you know, how, how did it work out?
So we received eighty-four trees, so eighty-four residents. Um, typically last year, we received fourteen hundred trees over the course of three months. So just so you know, that's, we, we made a, a count last year, man hours, et cetera, before we, uh, made the decision last January. Um, eighty-four trees, um, it's a touchless service like the rest of our recycle center went this year. So really, we just needed a proof of ID at the, you know, at the side window that just said you're a main resident and our guys do the rest. So people didn't have to leave their car. Um, everybody was fine. We don't get blowback. Typically, social media is a platform where people blow back, but they don't normally blow back, uh, face to face. That's just doesn't happen. But I will tell you, um, on Monday morning, we showed up to the garage and four trees were thrown over the fence. Um, I do, I did foresee that we're going to have abuse. I'd rather the abuse be on town property, not the Boys and Girls Club property. That was why you see some of the barricades there. Um, and it will be a, a, a slow transition. Understand there's a giant culture shock. Um, but for the most part, we haven't had, we, we've gotten almost no phone calls asking us about it. And, uh, people seem to understand what it is. Um, the fire department, just to, to jump off the volunteer fighter, fighters, uh, they received a hundred trees this week. So, you know, we're kind of keeping track because I do want to still gauge what the abuse was. So we couldn't prove abuse, but we knew there was abuse just from talking to residents. Um, people would just show up from random towns and throw trees there. So I really want to see fourteen hundred to what our actual, um, services. And then we'll adjust the fees going forward necessarily, you know, just to kind of, if, if it turns out to be eight hundred, then that's where we'll adjust the fees to appropriate.
What do the firefighters do with their trees?
Um, so they're burning them without a permit, but they could do that. They're actually bringing them to the Rod and Gun Club, um, and they're burning them. Um, and this is typically what you see a lot of communities do, that innovation, the Boy Scouts, volunteers, putting it towards something that isn't necessarily tax based.
But I heard, I heard that goats like trees too, so.
Absolutely. So farmers, so we have an old farmer, um, from Sudbury that actually used to come, excuse me, used to come and pick up a couple dozen from the Boys Club lot who have, who has reached out to us and we told them, as long as he tells us one of the Saturdays he wants to be there, we'll just accumulate a pile as long as he removes them. I don't mind that process as well. Um, but for the most part, went well. Typically, the next couple of weeks is where we should see the bulk. After that, it's the strange linger. We've had trees dropped off at the Boys Club in March.
June.
Yeah, like, it's, it's like, was it in your backyard and you forgot about it and you just brought it out? So we're trying to limit that as well. Um, typically, the window you normally see is the first couple of weeks of January is the bulk. So we'll see.
How do, how do we handle people that are getting rid of it in trash bags? Because I've seen that.
So they have that ability. Now, again, that's a, that, if they want to cut it up and do that, our trash restrictions and rules and regulations, oh, how's it? Harvey isn't technically supposed to take, uh, material like that in a bag, but if they can't tell, sometimes it's in the barrel in the bag and they dump it, then, you know, they won. If they're willing to cut it up like that. I've actually seen, Armin, when we were doing the solid waste, um, rules and regs, and we were holding people accountable, we did this sticker exchange. I used to see people put fourteen dollars worth of stickers on a big Amazon box, when if they just took an extra minute.
Cut it.
Box and put it in the recycle bin, it was.
Cut it up too, yeah.
So that tells you that the stick cost wasn't appropriate if they're willing to throw fourteen dollars on a box to take the five seconds. Sometimes we got to force that. It's not always warranted, meaning it's not always wanted. But sometimes you got to kind of funnel people into the right, the right situation. So.
Sorry, David.
No, that, um, I, I guess I'm, I was surprised. Thanks for asking, Chris. I thought that the fire department was basically delivering the trees over to.
That's what I thought. Me too.
And you guys were getting half the cost, five bucks for the. So I.
I, I, I mean, I don't.
We waived all fees, Dave, so.
No, I know, but I, but I figured that they were taking, you know, they would, they would take in the ten bucks, giving you guys five for chipping it up and they kept five in their pocket. So.
I just want to know essentially the other twelve hundred trees went.
We'll see. Give them time.
Still.
Give them time. There's no.
You got about, you're going to end up with around a hundred. They took a hundred and ten or so.
Yeah.
That's twelve hundred trees that went somewhere.
Or, yeah, but still, that's twelve hundred trees over the course of a three month window.
Right, right, but that's a lot of trees.
No, they're, they'll show up.
Yeah, they'll check, check the river.
They still got the orange on them.
Check over the fence next, next Monday morning.
Right now.
We do have cameras, so we haven't. We do have cameras, so we haven't checked them yet. So we will, we will, we will have the police take a look. We will try to make it a minimum more of talking to. That was what me and Chief Noble talked about. Just kind of monitoring the sites for abuse. Just try to guide people to the right method, so.
Okay, nothing else.
Great, thank you. And Chris.
I just, just the same, same as everybody. Wish everybody happy new year and I see that Mike Guzzo was still on in. Once, once more, Mike. Thanks for all the hard work and good luck in your retirement. Stay out of those good bakeries.
I think he's.
Thank you very much.
You'll blow up like a tick if you keep.
Yeah.
The only bad thing I've been in Maynard, I gained twenty pounds since I've been here, so food is good in Maynard.
So you got good food?
I know.
Good luck, Mike.
By, by the way, the, the cannolis at Market Basket is not bad.
Oh, yeah, you are. Before you leave, a brief story. I always used to kid with Angie about the Godfather, about leave the gun, take the cannolis. Weeks ago, she brought in forty cannolis from Market Basket.
Not bad, right?
She left the gun at home, though. She does that.
Better if you buy the cream in the shells and put them together yourself because they don't get soggy.
All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Excellent. All in favor, Dave?
Let's make twenty twenty one a great one.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.